10th, 2020 Radnor Township Board of Commissioners meeting. Our president this evening will not be here, so I will be running this meeting. You're stuck with me, and I apologize for the delay. The thing would not take my temperature. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Before we get into public participation, I would just like to thank and commend the staff. We've had, I think, a number of significant storms in the past week and actually this summer. And once again, our staff, our police, Public Works, fire, engineering, everyone rose to the occasion. And I think I will speak for everyone, if that's all right, in thanking the staff and saying, job well done, and thank you for supporting and assisting the residents. With that, we'll move to public participation. Is there any public participation this evening?
Good evening, Sarah Pilling from 29 Garrett Avenue.
Good evening.
I wanted to bring to the township's attention and the Board of Commissioners an open letter that has been written by Pennsylvania Reps Robb, who is in Philadelphia County, and McCarter, who is in Glen Side of Montgomery County, to PICO, calling for PICO to align its practice, practices with rates and public opinion. Currently, PICO's use of solar is one-half of 1 percent, and there's no reason that should not be more. Doing this will strengthen the local economy through jobs, and the half a percent is inconsistent with PICO's support for renewable energy. We're all using renewable energy, and they should be. So from my understanding, the townships of Weston Arton, Downingtown, Conchahocken, West Conchahocken, Kennett Township, Bridgeport, and the Chair of Montgomery County have written a letter to PICO encouraging PICO to increase its use of alternative energy. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and I hope that the Board of Commissioners will consider it and the township will consider supporting the other, the two legislators and the other townships in requesting that PICO increase the amount of solar it's using in its energy mix. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will get started. Consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening?
Item F.
Item F?
Hold on, just pulling it up here, sorry. We have Letter F, and how about also Letter J?
Commissioner Booker?
And Letter E.
So Items F, so E, F, and J, am I correct?
No.
E, F, and J. Yes?
No. Oh, yeah, E, F, and J, yes, correct, sorry.
E, F, and J, okay. May I get a motion, oh, is there anything that staff would like to pull from the consent agenda? Anything the public would like to pull this evening? All right, with that, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Items E, F, and J?
So moved.
I need a second. All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus Items E, F, and J, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Larkin and Commissioner Enderly absent. Item E, Commissioner Booker.
Resolution 2020-81 authorizing directing the submittal of the application for a traffic signal approval to Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for intersection of King of Pressure Road and Eagle Road slash Pine Tree Road. Pulling that out for a separate vote. I think that we've gone over this issue multiple times, but I'm against this traffic expansion, this expenditure, and believe that this will only attract traffic and add to the problem we have at King of Pressure Road and the bridge with truck strikes, which we had one recently. About every six weeks, we average a truck strike on that, on that bridge. There's 15,000 vehicles per day on King of Pressure Road. This is going to facilitate an additional 7,000 vehicles per day on this road. It's too much traffic. It's not necessary, and it was not something that was requested by the constituents and the residents. I'm not sure how many times or what the different approvals are, but this traffic light is not requested or desired by the constituents, and I believe it's not necessary for the, or it's not conducive with facilitating the highest quality of life in the areas around the northern section of Radnor. Steve, you want to talk about why we're approving it again? I'm happy to hear about it, but I think that we have in the past approved the grant request and the submission, so I don't know what this particular approval is for this.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you noted, the project was previously vetted and approved by the Board of Commissioners, and we did receive a grant in conjunction with Eastern University and Cabrini University. The TE160, we've probably had a dozen of these in the last year. This is basically a maintenance agreement with PennDOT that states the township will own, operate, and maintain the traffic signal in accordance with PennDOT requirements, and that has to be done by resolution.
Okay, again, I'm opposed to this traffic light and opposed to township expenditures to maintain it.
Any other Commissioner comment to Item E? All right, I will go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2020-81 authorizing and directing the submittal of the application for traffic signal approval TE160 to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the intersection of King of Pressure Road, SR 1021, and Eagle Road, SR 1042, Pine Tree Road, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two with Commissioner Larkin and Commissioner Enderly absent. Resolution F, Commissioner Abel.
I'll look to staff, to Steve McNellis, to explain the item.
The, this is our shred event and e-force compliance. We go through the DEP for this. This is well received by the residents. We did get a couple prices. This is the cheapest price right here. We had paid as much as 15,000 before. We get, we get a lot of traffic on this event. People are calling all the time to get rid of their TVs and their appliances.
So I've actually been stuck in traffic on Ivan during this event. But, but last year, we partnered with a company called Curb My Clutter, which takes residents' electronics, recycles them, and there's also, you know, a percentage of that cost comes back to the township, and I think residents also get a portion of the cost. So why, why have we decided to continue to go out and spend, in this case, $12,000 when it's probably a net benefit if we were to use Curb My Clutter, which I believe their name has changed to Retriever?
That is correct. I don't know how many people use the Curb My Clutter. I don't know how well advertised it is. It was on the website, but this is something we do every year. I don't see a problem with it. I mean, it's up to the commissioners.
Yeah, if I could jump in just really quickly, Madam Vice President, just if that's, if the Board would like, I mean, what Mr. McNellis is mentioning is true. The program in the past has been wildly popular, which was the reason why we initiated, you know, getting pricing and setting a date for 2020. But given the agreement we do have with Curb My Clutter, as long as everyone is in agreement that when those phone calls come in for electronic disposal, that we point them in that direction, which is consistent with the agreement that was adopted by the Board, we can certainly do that and then refocus the event to just be a, you know, a shredding event and take the electronic piece out.
And, and Steve, just to follow up, I don't disagree that it's popular and that residents may not know about it, but that's, that's the exact reason why I don't think we should have e-recycling here, because we want to start educating the residents that we have this capability, and they don't have to hold on to their electronics for 364 days, that they can call any day and schedule a pickup, and it'll be gone.
When, when the people do call, that option is given to them on the phone, they just, they just choose to show up here. They ask, when is the drop off? So it's the resident's choice.
Yeah, I just think, you know, if we have two options, one is an expenditure from the township, and two is a gain for the township, to me, I don't see the reason to continue to hold these events when we could be benefiting from residents recycling through this partnership.
Bill?
Yeah, why would we spend the 12,000, I guess is the question?
Let me just ask my question. Bill, how much has Curb My Clutter, or now the new name, how much has that raised dollar retrieved? Do you have a ballpark of the number that it's netted?
No, that's something we have to look up.
Is it negligible?
Well, yeah, it's not been something significant enough that it would have caught my attention in looking through the revenues.
Okay, it's not, it's not going to get us out of the...
I don't have an exact amount. We can look it up.
Okay, is there, and then Mr. McNellis, I'm going to miss you.
Get to that later.
Okay. Are there some, and I don't know, are there some items that Curb My Clutter wouldn't take that this does take? How does that work?
They take everything that we take, but I believe there was a charge for TVs.
Okay, tube TVs are charged?
I believe.
Yeah, there's a specific type of TV that they charge.
Right, yes.
Okay, and so curb, curb my clutter charges, correct? But have, but this, what we have for the township, the residents, that's done for free?
Yes, it's for free.
Okay, so there is some benefit for the residents?
One, one year was over 50,000 pounds.
Got it.
Parking lot was full.
Okay.
Just real quickly to that point about charging, looking at the agreement, they, the fee structure is set up so that televisions and cathode ray tubes are, have a fee attached to them. So any television would be $35, it looks like, per unit, and then any rear projection TVs, extra-large CRTVs, or wooden cabinet televisions would be $100 per unit. So it's, yeah, for the TVs and the monitors, it would, Curb My Clutter does have a fee associated with it.
Could we invite Curb My Clutter to the event, and maybe they would do it for zero, or maybe, maybe $1,000 versus 12,000? Who's, who's collecting the electronics for 12,000? I, it might be on here, I didn't, I don't recall.
It's e-force, and we have used Cyber Crunch in the past.
E-force, Cyber Crunch.
How many years have we held this event?
Probably six or seven. It's relatively new.
And just sort of on your memory, how many residents take advantage of the, of the day?
I don't have an exact number, but the line's going out to 30 and out to Conestoga on Ivan. Very, very popular.
And how do we, how do we advertise this? What's the promotional efforts around this?
The township advertises it through its regular social media and website platforms, and then any commissioner that wishes to push the message out to.
And I know last year, I think the, when we held the event, you guys did a significant kind of redesign of where the pickup process is and all that, because we did have such a hard, bad backup, I think, the year before on Ivan of people trying to drop off.
Yes, the issue was the vendor was late, and the people showed up, and we had no where's to put the items, so we had to stack the cars. It was two years ago, and we moved it deeper into the parking lot, and it's moving a lot faster.
Yeah, it seemed to work really well last year. Any other comment?
Yeah, one more, just how much for an open-top pickup, Steve, for residents?
Open stop starts at $75. Five items.
Five items, the TV could, TVs could be in that, though, right?
We don't take TVs with open stops because of where we dump. The dump doesn't accept them.
Okay, thank you. So if we, Steve, you said 50,000 pounds of electronics? So, I mean, and Commissioner Faris is trying to make the point that we're not getting anything from this partnership. If we were to educate people to donate their equipment through Curb My Clutter, that 50,000 pounds then turns into probably something more tangible that's worth talking about. So again, it's a re-education, and Commissioner Booker has a valid point, that have we reached out to Curb My Clutter to see if they would be a participant at the, at the event and not charge $12,000?
Can make that call if we're directed.
12,000 here, 12,000 there. Pretty soon, you're talking about real money.
Do we need to book this by a certain time, Mr. McNellis?
The date's been set, and if you push it back, I don't think it'll hurt anything. It might be better with, with the COVID the way it is.
What is the date?
November 7th.
Any other Commissioner comment on this? All right, then, I guess I'd need a motion to approve Resolution 2020-87 authorizing electronics and paper shredding event to be hosted by Radnor Township, or we could set this aside and wait until we get additional information, Mr. McNellis, if you can look into Curb My Clutter or whatever they are called now, see if it's something they would do, although if they're charged already for TVs, I can't see why they would come here and pick up free TVs, but I guess it's worth an ask.
We can ask them, won't hurt.
Okay.
So are we tabling this?
So, yeah, we will go ahead and table this. I will make a motion to table Resolution 2020-87 authorizing electronics and paper shredding event to be hosted by Radnor Township.
So moved.
Any objections? Oh, all right, I will call the vote. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 2020-87, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Public comment out there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, previously, we don't take public comment on items that are tabled.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't take public comment on, we don't take...
You've forgotten paper shredding, which is, for some people, is more important than electronic.
Okay, I think that, so what we're doing is we're just tabling this particular resolution. We will wait for Mr. McNellis to come back to us with some information about Curb My Clutter, and either way, this will be back on for our first September meeting, either as an electronics and paper shredding event, perhaps hosted by two different groups, because I don't think that Curb My Clutter accepts paper, do they, and does paper shredding? And I know the paper shredding is very popular, and this event is extremely popular. So we will see what comes up, and we can have this on our agenda for September, and I think that's still plenty of time to approve it for the November 7th event, if we want to stick with that.
Will, if we don't approve it tonight, are we going to lose the date, or does it affect the contract that you're already considering?
We just won't cancel it. We'll wait. We can wait.
Okay.
I'll add, is there a fee to cancel?
I don't know. I don't think so.
But that can certainly be information you include for us, and we can use that to weigh our decision in September as well.
We'll ask all those questions.
Great, thank you, Steve. All right, all those in favor of tabling Resolution 2020-87, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes four to one with Commissioner Larkin and Enderly absent. Item J, Commissioner Booker.
One moment, here we go. I brought my glasses in there, left them in the car, and it's a little bit blurry for me, sorry. Letter J, Resolution 2020-79 approving the property and casualty insurance binder for property general liability, automobile, police professional liability, public official liability, employment practices liability, umbrella liability, and cyber liability, insurance coverage beginning August 1, 2020 through July 31, 2021, in the amount of $383,844. I noticed this item because I had, there were two different people that I spoke with who were interested in talking with the township about the property casualty coverage and expressed interest in bidding on that, and I didn't see any bids recap in the materials. And I also noted that the price for the liability had been going up and was going, was going to be up slightly this year from last year, had gone down, I guess, three or four years ago, and then has come back up. So number one, what about other bidders? And number two, why are we having increased insurance? Because most insurance coverage costs are going down because of there's been less activity for 2020.
Well, I'll, I'll start and then let Mr. Tate jump in as needed. The township has, for longer than, than I think most of us have been employed here, engaged the services of Arthur Gallagher with our contact being Pat Larkin as our insurance broker that goes out into the market and shops all of these different coverages, and then brings to us the various prices that they've received from the, from the market, based on their expertise and knowledge of our assets and our insurance needs and understanding what our claims history has been and where our exposures generally are at. Pat is able to go in and get us pricing that not only is competitive with where we feel like the number should be at, but also in terms of providing a service. When we do have claims, Pat works tirelessly to make sure that the township is taken care of from an insurance perspective and serves as the intermediary between us and the ultimate insurance provider. I, I don't have the exact companies we've used through the years, but I do know that our insurance provider has changed based on the pricing that, that is obtained. In the last two years or three years, the principal has gone up slightly. We've also had some pretty catastrophic claims between the Comfort Station out at Anki getting hit by the tree and needing a complete repla, a rebuild. We lost our tub grinder to a fire, which was a half a million dollar piece of equipment. So that was a half a million dollar claim in one transaction, and then a handful of others. So while the, the claim activity isn't all that high, the, the dollar value of those claims in the last couple of years has been. And then with some of the other employee practice and police-related coverages, those are, those are industry trends and move accordingly, whether we have claim experience or not. And that was part of the explanation on why those areas are going up on us a little bit, too. And in tot, in total, the township is paying 384,000 for a year's coverage on all these different areas, and in 2015, 16, we paid 356,000. So the, the delta over the six-year period has been manageable and not something that raised to a level of concern on our end based on the pricing that we see and the service that we get. So I don't know, Bob, if I missed anything.
No, Mr. White covered pretty much in total the entire program and its history. Regarding the other broker, I did have a conversation with, with one gentleman in particular, and it was in, in late May, early June, and to, to fully, to do the, the process fairly and equitably would require us going out to an RFP and therefore giving all other potential brokers, as well as the incumbent, sufficient time to, to bid on these coverages. We had determined together, this, this new broker I spoke to, that there was just not enough time to meet an eight-one renewal. He acknowledged that, we both acknowledged. We have traded emails since the renewal, as recently as last Wednesday, August 5th, and talked about starting this process towards the end of the year and giving ourselves a good six-month lead time for a very comprehensive RFP to be issued, and then allowing all potential brokers to then, to respond. So we're in discussion, and we, it's something that we'll plan for doing for next year.
Okay, thank you. What I, my understanding of the, the provision of these services is that these, these brokers, they do have a set group of insurers that they go to. So I believe that it would be helpful to have another group look at it and see what, what they could, they could do, because there's, it's, there are certain preferred people that, it's not like Arthur J. Gallagher goes to every broker for every one of these. They have, they have their own, their own preferred folks. So there, there might be some, some benefit there. So I will follow up with you in December, and we'll, we'll talk about this again and try to, try to move that along and make sure that we have optimal coverage on these. Again, we, we should have less claim, I mean, insurance is generally going down because there's so few, so many fewer claims in all aspects of insurance for 2020, because we've been locked down for so long by overreaching governmental policy that save money on insurance for everybody. So I would expect to see lower number this year.
May I get a motion to approve, oh, I'm sorry, is there any other Commissioner comment? May I get a resolution to approve, or a motion to approve Resolution 2020-79 approving the property and casualty insurance binder, and I'm not going to read everything, because Commissioner Booker already did it. So, may I get a motion to approve this resolution, please? I got a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2020-79, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Larkin and Commissioner Enderly absent. All right, I think that takes care of everything on the consent agenda. The recognition of Mr. McNellis, we will hold that until September, Mr. White?
Yes, yeah, we spoke with Mr. McNellis, and we're hoping that we can get a few of the Public Works folks that, that want to participate here. Hopefully, in September, we can have a few more people in the room. But in fairness to the years of service that Steve has provided and the leadership he's provided for the, the folks at the garage, having them be part of celebrating him seems to make sense and be fair.
All right, that would be great.
Steve, are you still going to be part of the township, where is he?
He's not, he's...
He already left. Is he still going to be, I thought he was retiring, right?
Yes.
He'll still be here in September, they won't be retired by then, though.
He will, he will have retired by then, but he is under...
But we'll bring him back.
Very strict promises to be here, and if he fails to, to meet those promises, I've ensured him that the police will come and get him.
And, and I do want to also, you know, somebody's not here, but Steve has been integral part and really important to the people in, in the township and Public Works. What they do is really the face of the township to most people. Where are we on his replacement, just as a...
We've got some interviews on Wednesday of this week, so we advertised about two months ago, we received a handful of resumes, a few internal candidates and a few external candidates, so we're gonna, we're gonna start those conversations on Wednesday and see where that takes us.
Are we going to include the Board of Commissioners at all? I'd like to, to, to help out.
I think this is a personnel discussion, we can have this in executive session, if you'd like, Commissioner Booker.
Reach out, I'd like to help out with that.
All right, I'm going to move on to committee reports. Resolution 2020-86, waiver request, Janicek Homes, 427 East Lancaster Avenue, drive aisle width. May I get a motion to approve? May I get a second? All right, I will second it. Mr. Norsini.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Mr. Janicek is here to present. In a nutshell, on his project, a retaining wall was installed at an incorrect location in order to meet ADA requirements and have sidewalk. He's requesting that the drive aisle width be reduced by almost two feet in some areas. There are two review letters, one from Gilmore Associates and Gannett Fleming, and I will let Mr. Janicek take it from here.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for taking the time to review my waiver request. I have a question, may I put some of the information on the table for your review?
Please do. Thank you.
Handheld mic.
It's right here, I have it.
Okay, so I will start by showing a few different images for the Board's refreshing of what our project is. For any of you who have not taken note of, this is our luxury condominium project at 427 Lancaster Avenue. This is a picture of the exterior facade of the building and the waiver request is relative to a retaining wall that is running on the east side of the property that runs from South Lancaster north to the railroad tracks. And the retaining wall again is more on the north side of the property because of a elevation difference between the neighboring property on the east and our property. So that is the building. The retaining wall in question, I have some photographs to show you. Okay. So again, I'll start with the center picture. This is the neighboring property on the east, the orange fencing rep... Okay, thank you. Again, this is the neighboring property on the east, the orange fencing represents the property line. The concrete retaining wall is the subject retaining wall that we're discussing. The ADA handicap accessibility sidewalk would be installed in this gravel area that you see on the photograph and the area in between the retaining wall and the property line is approximately three feet plus or minus. In this area between the retaining wall and the property line is going to be plantings, privacy plantings, and aesthetic plantings that separate the two properties. This photograph is just a close-up shot of the subject wall and again, you'll see the distance between the wall and the property line is plus or minus three feet. And then this is another image of what we'll call a feature wall and then the retaining wall, as you'll see, is more on the north side of the property. There is a elevation height difference between the two properties, it's approximately six feet, meaning the eastern property is approximately six feet higher than our property, again on the north. As you come to the south side of the property, the elevations are almost the same, which is why you don't see a retaining wall more south. Ultimately, what we believe happened is under these retaining wall is what's called a spread footer, which is the footer or foundation that supports the wall. And the surveying company put stakes in the property line. When the excavator was digging for the stakes, in his mind, he couldn't imagine that the wall would have been three feet closer to the property line because if the wall was three feet closer to the property line, there were fears of potential undermining of the neighbor's property because of the height difference and it also would not have afforded a suitable amount of planting area and one thing dominoed into the other. So if you look now onto the actual plan, and I know this is somewhat difficult to really see closely, but this line represents the neighbor's retaining wall. So they actually have a retaining wall on their property as well. And the fear was when excavating for the new retaining wall, which is represented in this, and I'm sure you can't see colors well because it's hard for me to see the colors on this, but there's a brown line where the proposed retaining wall would have been and then there's a blue line, which is the actual wall that was put in. So as a result of this retaining wall not being installed, essentially, I was mentioning earlier that the excavator set the wall on the front of the stake mark versus the back of the stake mark. So he was off by approximately three feet. So fast forward, we have this significant concrete retaining wall that is out of location and it affects our overall width of the driveway now. So we had had a couple of different meetings with various township officials to see if there were any ways that this could be dealt with and ultimately, we came up with the only thing that could possibly work, short of tearing out the retaining wall, is by reducing the width of the cartway. And so when we look at, back to the approved plan, a typical cartway in this type condition is approximately 22 feet. And keep in mind that this is a private property, obviously, but it's still designed for public use. If we think about an average car width is probably about six and a half feet, an average delivery truck like Amazon or FedEx is probably about eight feet in maximum width. There are certainly much larger oversized vehicles, a fire truck is more than eight foot wide, a dump truck is more than eight foot wide, but typically, we're not going to have any kind of continual activity with those oversized trucks. So what we're asking to, if the Board would entertain this, is to reduce this to approximately 19.4 or 19.5, 19 feet, five inches. The tightest point is 19.1 and the largest point is about 19.7 inches. And so if we divide that by two, even with an over, with a delivery truck at eight feet, that would be 16 feet. So there's still room, sufficient room for vehicles to pass each other in this space. And so as a result of the retaining wall being where it is, and obviously, at this stage of the game, removing that retaining wall would be costly, but also timing is a big issue. We lost, as we all know, almost three months of activity. We have agreements of sale in place of township residents that are hoping to close on this and move into their units sometime in October. And certainly, that would put a big monkey wrench into scheduling if we had to remove and put that wall back a few feet. And then it also dominos into the concern of undermining the neighbor's property because of his retaining wall and his asphalt. So it becomes a complex situation in the construction field, as you all know. Sometimes plans don't work exactly well to what field conditions are. And so I think we have a little bit of some human error here. We have some field conditions that are not exactly how they look on paper and of course, we have sensitive time delays that we're trying to meet with our prospective buyers. So our request essentially is if the Board would consider reducing this aisle way or travel distance from the ordinance required 22 feet down to approximately 19.1 to 19.6, which even at that distance, it still gives what we believe is sufficient traffic for delivery trucks, occupants, et cetera. And then, as Steve had mentioned, the two township engineering firms both looked at this situation and gave us a letter of opinion that they're okay with the request. So at that point, I open to the Board with any specific questions.
Sir, just two questions right off the bat. Do trash trucks use the same route?
They would, they would.
And then, can you describe the walkway that is going to be, I guess, closest to the traffic pattern?
Yes, so the actual walkway in its installation would not differ from the original approved plan. So an ADA compliant walkway has a minimum width of four feet and it also has limited grading. So obviously, it can't be a very steep pathway. And with this shift to the west, we are still maintaining the four-foot width and we are still maintaining the proper grade requirements for incline. So the actual installation of the ADA compliant walkway does not change at all.
So the walkway has a curb?
Yes, it does, yes. And that curb is nominally, I believe, eight inches tall. And that would have been the same either way. And insofar as trash removal, you asked a question, public property, it's by a private hauler, not by the township sanitation removal department.
Mr. Janicek, why did you approve the relocation of the wall and not in accordance with the construction documents?
Yeah, it's a very good question. And we didn't even know that the wall was in the wrong spot. When we were planning to put in the fencing, which in this photograph, you see these wood posts, which are actually part of the fence. So we came out as a requirement to identify property lines and the surveyor said, oh, you know, there's something that's a little conflict on here, my numbers aren't working, I'm getting a different dimension. So it wasn't until later in the process that we called for the fence to be staked out that we found this error. Because again, when you look in the pictures, may not really represent, this one might be a little. If you look at this distance, that tube, by the way, is an 18-inch diameter tube. So as you can see, there's a very small distance and I don't think anybody, including myself, thought that the wall was going to be right up against the fence. It just didn't make any logical sense to us because what you also may notice in this picture is these are fronts of cars in the adjacent parking lot. And again, if we're shaving down right up against there, the fear is that you'd be undermining the parking lot. So it was not apparent at all that this was even an error and quite frankly, I guess we're lucky that we called for the survey of the fencing because we wouldn't have even realized it at all because everything would have appeared to have fit.
That's a good point. And if you never knew about it, maybe no one would have ever known about it, but that's not the case now.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank you for, these pictures are great, really shows us what that is and really good job putting together and depicting what the issue is. But so, but here's the issue. You just said you didn't approve, the excavator took it on himself to dig that wall where he dug it, you didn't approve it.
Right.
You're the owner, you're paying for it.
Yes.
So the excavator decided on his own to relocate the wall and not build it in accordance with the plans and specs.
Yeah.
So that's the excavator's problem or your problem, but it's not this Board or our engineers' problem. Why are you bringing this to us?
Well, I think for a couple of reasons. Is the location of the wall, which it actually is not, as we know, where it's approved, it actually makes more viable sense where it is from a, again, being cognizant of the neighbor's property line.
I understand, but I disagree. It's not, doesn't make more sense, it makes less sense because we don't have the specified approved plan width. And Commissioner Abel makes a very good point. You could easily have somebody walking on that or you could have a person in a wheelchair, you have 22 units, I think, 22 beautiful condos, that's a lot, you could have 40 cars or whatever it is in the garage.
Yes.
You could have somebody in a wheelchair on that walkway, a trash truck coming in and somebody wanting to leave and go out with their car, all at that same point. 19 feet probably won't be enough. 22 feet is probably light. And we, the engineer said you needed 22 feet, that's what we approved and your excavator made a mistake, it's his fault.
Yeah, it was actually the surveyor who made the mistake, but you're right.
All right, well, you know, surveyor, the excavator, somebody generally, but whatever it is, and if, as soon as, and we see this all the time, as soon as somebody says, oh, well, let's allow them to have 19 feet, now everybody comes to us and says 19 feet. And then they say, well, you approved it, the Board approved it for Janicek. And it sets a precedence. So this is really something that we, the excavator, you should move the wall back. And if you're worried about undermining the adjacent driveway, they needed to put in shoring and then build the wall. And he should have bid it with the shoring and he should have known that, right? That's, that's, again, that's part of the construction and they should know that. If he didn't have put the shoring in there, if he was going to take it on his own, then the excavator's responsible for this. And we shouldn't, it shouldn't be on this Board to allow, to let your excavator off the hook. If he wants to relocate, if, how much would it cost to relocate the wall, is it $200,000?
No, not that much.
What is it, $100,000?
Probably in the $75,000 range.
Well, so, I didn't approve this, but there was, Commissioner Abel brought this up to me and as I recall, we approved donations to the township to a various fund for waivers. I think that this is inappropriate, I would never have approved that.
No, we did not approve that, it was tabled.
It was tabled?
We did not approve it.
Okay, and it didn't come back?
It has not come back yet.
Okay. But the concept is, and you don't need to do anything, right? We don't need to approve it and you don't need to make any donation, but I'm wondering if that's something that you talked about and considered with our folks?
No, Commissioner, that never came up.
Why not?[1600.25][1600.25](laughing) We talked about it with this Board a month ago.
So the item was tabled and really what we have here is a policy decision for the Board of Commissioners. We have a design requirement of 22 feet. The applicant cannot meet that design requirement or has not met that design requirement. So we did not discuss a fee in lieu of waivers. If you want to look at it on that basis...
No, I understand, I agree. I actually totally...
There's no benefit to the residents of the condo or the township.
And I disagree with that, I disagree with that whole concept, I think it's, if we, if we only need 19 feet, we should change our ordinance to specify, but that's not what we did. We have a requirement. And Mr. Janicek, this is your excavator's problem. He's, they are the ones that are at fault. It's their insurance and you should make them eat this. But I don't, I don't think I can agree to approve a smaller drive aisle. That building is so tight on that site. Remember what we had there, we had Rock Walker's, you know, doctor's office. Now we have 22 condos. It's a big bill, it's a biggest building right there on the, you know, it's right there in my neighborhood. So I can't see us letting a mistake by the excavator, and he admitted, well, I thought it was better. Okay, I understand you thought it was better, but it's wrong. Now, now we have to fix it and now you have to eat it. And if you don't make any money, that's on you, you shouldn't have done, you shouldn't have taken, because you said you didn't approve it, right?
Correct.
You weren't there, you have professionals that you pay for, you have contractors you bid to, you expect them to drew what's on the plan, they didn't do it. Why should you, why are they even putting you in the middle to come to us? It's not either of our problem. So I'm not for this and I can't see approving it.
Any, I'm sorry.
Madam Vice President, you can...
Yes, I was just going to say, any other comment?
Yeah, so for me, the jury's still out on it. At this time, I agree with Commissioner Booker, I can't approve this. That's why contractors and your subcontractors have insurance for mistakes like this. This is a mistake that unfortunately falls on you, I guess, as a GC, because that is your, one of your subcontractors. So for the township, pardon?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, I'm the developer on this project and I appreciate what you're saying and for us, not to cut you off, I'll let you finish, Mr. Farhi.
So it's, it's, you know, like I said, it's why you guys have insurance, it's not the township's fault. We were, and not that you care, but the people at home, we have an issue on, was it Radnor Chester Road and one of the commissioners came up to me and said exactly what Commissioner Booker said, you're not guaranteed to make a profit, that's not why we're here. That's not why we're here. And we want you, you know, we want to have stuff developed. Let me rephrase that, developed correctly, aesthetically correctly. But at this point, I can't approve it. I am for maybe tabling this and seeing if we can maybe find some kind of common ground. I haven't heard, the only thing that, that I would actually like to hear is if our engineer, Mr. Norsini, would like to weigh in on the pros and cons of this, because we've heard from you. Everything that you're going to say is, it's fine, it's fine, go ahead. But if I can ask our engineer if, what the pros and cons are with this.
So Commissioner, I think Commissioner Booker laid it out very clearly. We have a 22-foot width, a 22-foot wide aisle width requirement, that's our requirement. I'm not saying that's the be-all to end-all, but that is our requirement. You have a 22-unit condo development that's going to have cars, you know, going in and out of it. The argument could be made, well, there's roads in the township that are narrower than 19 feet. That's absolutely true. We have that outdoor, we have it in our drossen. But there's a reason why we have the 22-foot wide aisle width. That's in our, all our parking lots, 20-foot wides, 20-foot long spot, 22-foot wide aisle width, 20-foot long spot. That's for people to back in and out of and to get around. So it, I mean, it's a judgment call for the, for the Board of Commissioners, but when, the topic that was brought up about waivers is, is there a benefit to the residents of the development? Has some, has something come up where the developer has said, hey, if we can do a 19.1 foot aisle width, I can give my residents this, your new residents, my buyers? I don't see that here. Is there a benefit to the township? I don't really see that either. I mean, there's nothing there that says to the township, hey, if we go with this waiver, there is a benefit to the better good of Radnor Township. So, I mean, from where I sit, I think aisle width should be 22 feet. There's a reason we have that width. It's your call, absolutely, that's why it's in front of you tonight. But I feel that it should meet the standards. We have a lot of substandard items that were built years and years ago with that, throughout the township. We now have standards. My suggestion is we build to those standards.
First, thank you for your, for saying that, Mr. Norsini. Just one more question. Does it, does it, I know we said trash trucks and fire, does it create a, I wish Chief Flanagan was in the room, but does it create an issue with fire? Maybe Chief Flanagan can ask when he sits back down. But I'll ask you, Mr. Norsini, does that create a, you know, trash trucks, fire, big trucks, moving vans?
We didn't bring this, we did not bring this to the emergency services. Like I say, we have roads in our drossen that are 18-foot wide, but there are roads that lead to homes and driveways, not a more condensed area such as this.
This is people on top of people.
I'm just basing it on, we have a requirement, his plan was approved on that requirement. I think you, I think all our plans should meet the requirements unless there's a very good reason that benefits the resident of the land development project or the residents of Radnor in a whole, as a whole, that they get a waiver. Other than that, it would be, you know, it's solely up to you, but that's my opinion on the matter.
That's, that's fine, I'm satisfied.
I have a question. So what are, what are your solutions? I'm sure that you have thought through what your options are. One would be to tear it down and put it where it's supposed to be. But what are some other solutions that you've come up with?
Unfortunately, there's very limited solutions. We had looked at, is it feasible to relocate the handicap parking spot from the north area, which is where I'm indicating right here, and move that into the interior so that there would be no need for one that's on a wheelchair to have to navigate from the exterior to the interior that they would already have a designated spot, which this spot here was what we're contemplating that. But I don't think that, that, you know, addresses some of the concerns of someone who may be a visitor who parks here and although it would be very odd because if they parked here, they'd have to roll over to here to get to the sidewalk. So there's really not any options if the sidewalk has to stay, and we certainly are a proponent of that. We certainly need the, recognize the need for AD accessibility. I don't think that there's any other option but the narrower drive pathway. And to Commissioner Booker, your point of how that affects us as the developer, you are correct in that that's not our responsibility. It certainly is whether it be the excavator and the surveyor. But the challenge for us is the COVID timeline, certainly as we all know, put us back two or three months. And one thing that I would say, which Steve could confirm, and we have certainly emailed trails, this discussion between our development firm and the township, I'm just guessing, I could have looked at that exact date, but it's probably six months that we started that. And then, you know, things happened and then COVID happened and here we are now with closing dates of October. And to pull this out now, it really jeopardizes our ability with scheduling. We have this problem of scheduling to get our vendors back here to do this. That's certainly creating hardship on us and.
Mr. Janisak, if I could just note, this topic was not brought up six months ago. Originally, there were handicap parking items that were discussed six months ago. This is relatively recent, I'll say maybe two months. It went through trying to schedule all of us together, our consultants, we also had our folks, our third-party codes inspectors look at it. So this is not a six-month issue. Items on this project go back six months regarding handicap parking and so forth, but there has not been that long a time period for this specific issue. Not to say that Mr. Janisak doesn't have a timeline to meet, but I want to set that in.
You know, Mr. Janisak, if I were you, I would be so, I would be hot, hot as, hot as heck at these, at these contractors and the surveyor for getting this wrong. Maybe there's something that you can work out where you can close and get a C of O if, if this is, if the wall's being, being moved. I don't know. It has to be totally done before you can close on any of these units. But, but otherwise, I think that it's an important enough element that we should insist that we relocate the wall in this instance. You know, you don't even have any other room. I mean, there's the space on the other side of the building. Maybe we, I guess we couldn't move it, the whole building if we would have set it up a little bit more the other side. But I think right now that that's, it's unfortunate and maybe try to work something out with your closings, but the guy should start with the saws and the jackhammers.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comment on this? Okay. Mr. Janisak, I, you know, appreciate your, the predicament that you're in, but I do agree with my fellow commissioners, you know, this is the responsibility of your subcontractors and I think they are the ones that are at fault and it's hard to say, you know, we can make it right for them. So this is not something that I will be able to approve, so. Is there any other staff comment on this? Is there any public comment on this? All right, I will call the vote. All those in favor of resolution 2020-86? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Janisak.
So Commissioner Booker, you brought up a, also a potential of a contribution to maybe the Parks and Rec Fund, something like that? Is that even an option?
Oh, typically, we rely on our staff for that. If the staff thinks that there's some kind of middle ground, and that's why I asked, and Mr. Norsini, he doesn't seem that there's a middle ground, so.
Honestly, Commissioner, this, this was never discussed. So what's before you is, you have two engineering letters that say they have no engineering reason to go against it. We have our code, which says it should be 22-foot. We never broached the fee in lieu of topic with the developer. If that's something the board would want us to do, we will gladly do that following this meeting, you know, tomorrow. But that would be your call. We did not broach that.
I believe that item that we had, that I, on the last agenda that we tabled, that will come back, was really around in the SADO process and not now, when, to me, it looks even more of a quid pro quo than anything else. So.
Yeah, it's, again, it's a self-inflicted hardship, I mean, not to, yeah, and I'm sure that this has been, as Commissioner, it's been happening at you for a while. We don't want to, you know, put salt in the wound, but this is self-inflicted. And as Commissioner Brasek said, it's not our job to make it right. That's something that you're responsible for.
All right, I think Mr. Janisak has heard enough from us. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of resolution 2020-86, the waiver request for Janisak Homes 427 East Lancaster Drive Isle With, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? The motion fails, five to nothing. I'm sorry, Mr. Janisak. It is a beautiful project, though. It's coming along very nicely. Resolution 2020-89, Board acceptance of the 2019 audited financial statements and independent auditor report. Is that going to be Mr. White or Mr. Tate?
Well, I'll tee it up. Those commissioners that have worked with me for years know that this has always been a project near and dear to my heart. So it was interesting to, to watch the project from a little different angle this year. I just would like to recognize the work of the Finance Department, especially Mr. Tate and Ms. Lacy, who joined us tonight. Thank you, Amy, for being here. Their leadership, working with all the different departments, helps bring this whole project together. And we don't get to spend a whole lot of time each year celebrating that, but it is something that is an every single minute of every day event. It's something that we take very seriously in all of our departments. And this is, this report and the audit report is the culmination of all of that work. So while we get a couple of seconds to celebrate it, I'd just like to recognize Bob, Amy, and their leadership and everyone else that worked with them, especially those on Carfac that reviewed the documents and were part of the process. Ed Kane, who if, if he keeps us up, he's going to have a statue somewhere in town. Although I don't want to, I don't want to make any promises tonight, Ed. Now, Ed, Ed has been invaluable, all jokes aside, in helping lead this from Carfac perspective. And then our auditing representatives from ZA. So with that, Bob, take it away. I just want to recognize you guys. Thank you all very much.
Bill, thank you. It's, happy to continue the tradition and the, what was put in place many years ago by you and this department and, and correcting a lot of the deficiencies and a lot of the comments from long ago. And with the support of our entire finance team, I echo the same, the same comments. It's a team effort, we couldn't do it without the team we have, with the support of Mr. Ed Kane. And I thank our auditors here tonight, Ms. Debbie Bake and the principal with Zelenkovsky Axlerod, and Mr. Tim Mira, manager with Zelenkovsky Axlerod. So with that, I want to turn it over to Mr. Kane to kick it off and make some comments regarding the process and Carfac's involvement. And my thanks also to the full Carfac group, who was engaged, involved, and offered a lot of good insight and feedback during this process. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good evening, Mr. Kane. Thank you for being here.
Ed Kane, 16 Stone Creek Lane in Brenmar Radnor Township. This is act. Good job. This is actually, I believe, our 10th year handling this process. And I've been involved since the beginning, right, wrong, or indifferent. Where currently, we have engaged Zelenkovsky Axlerod, the auditors, to perform the annual financial audit pursuant to the township's Home Rule Charter. The township management bears the sole responsibility for the completeness and accuracy of the 2019 financial statements. And Zelenkovsky Axlerod, in its capacity as the township's independent CPA firm, is responsible for expressing an opinion on the financial statements as prepared by management and is responsible for issuing an opinion based upon the results of the audit of the township as summarized in the independent auditor's report. Carfac, which is a volunteer committee of resident stakeholders as appointed by you, the Board of Commissioners, was involved in the audit process by overseeing project schedules and timelines, discussing internal control deficiency resolutions from prior year audit results. And I want to digress for one moment. This is the third year in a row there are no audit deficiencies. In discussions that I have had with Zelenkovsky Axlerod, and they agree with me, based upon the results that were there long before Carfac came into existence, it should have been a qualified opinion. It was, that was going back many years, it was not. The best result can be when the auditors are looking for deficiencies and can find none. This is the third year in a row and I have to compliment the Finance Department led by Bob Tate. And thank you, Amy. And for many years, led by Bill White, until he decided to move on to a new position. So I do need to compliment on that. It's what we refer to as SASS 115, letter to management. There is no letter to management because there are no deficiencies. Carfac, so that we go on record, accepts no responsibility and takes no position on the completeness or accuracy of either the independent auditor's report of, or the audited financial statements. And finally, whereas based upon all of what has been discussed, Carfac recommends that you, the Board of Commissioners, adopt a resolution during this meeting to accept the independent auditor's report and management's 2019 audited financial statements. So I want to make the resolution and then I would like to discuss it. Is that all right?
Certainly.
Okay. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners formally accept the independent auditor's report as prepared by Zelenkovsky Axlerod and the 2019 audited financial statements as prepared by management, both of which are included in the township's 2019 comprehensive annual financial report, commonly referred to as the CAFR. And this is made today, August 10th.
So I will make the motion to approve that resolution. May I get a second?
Okay. At this point, Debbie, do you want to make any comments or Tim?
It's up to you. It's your choice.
Well, should I ask perhaps if any of the board has any questions or is that all right? Or would, do you have some, okay. Is there anyone here on the board that has any questions? But before I do that, I would like to thank you, Mr. Kane. I know that you spend many, many hours working on this, so thank you. And thank you both for your hard work and certainly our Finance Department, who are just phenomenal, so. With that, any questions from our commissioners?
I just have one, one question more, just to, once again, say, great job. Just, and you may have brought it up whilst out of the room. How many deficiencies did you have when you started? And I know that you've had zero now and you've had zero now for quite some time, so just...
This is the third year of zero.
Okay. And when you started, back in 2010?
Yeah, I think the 2008 financial statements and accompanying audit report had 34, 35, somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay. And you have zero for the past three years, so.
Past three years. And it was an open discussion in front of Carfac. I made the comment, I am a CPA, my office happens to be in Wayne Radnor Township. And I'm a past Board member of the American Institute of CPAs, that from my viewpoint, reading what those deficiencies were back then, the opinion should have been qualified. The audit partner concurred with me at that meeting, said that if it had been their opinion, they would have qualified it. When Mr. White took this over.
Mr. Kane, can you just speak into the mic so everyone can hear you?
When Mr. White took this over, it was quickly to cure those deficiencies. And that was something we insisted... that was something we insisted on. And we would work with them on various points to make sure they were cured and that they were, to that extent, not repeating. The final piece, which has now been fully implemented, has been dealing with the fixed asset reporting system.
Just thank you for your job well done.
So Mike, I haven't seen the CAFRA or any, any report. Nothing was in the packet, unless I'm missing something. Was it, was there anything, even a hard copy or anything? Isn't there even a letter that says no material deficiencies, even?
Rich, there was a copy at everyone's seat. Do you not have this?
Oh, it's right here? Right here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I see that. I did not see this.
I was going to tease. You didn't have a chance to read it yet.
No, it was, it was here when I came in. So no. And I thought maybe it was leftover from a prior meeting. I have no, I had no idea. I had no idea what it is. Okay. So, you know, again, it's difficult to look at this right now. We have to approve this resolution. I totally accept no material deficiencies. That's fine. Just wanted to make sure we have that here. Also, the big item, the big item that we have is the balance sheet item of the accrued actuarial deficiency that we have on the pension. And we're really, it's insolvent. And I wanted to talk about the new requirement to disclose the amount that the township is underwater and, and what that looks like as far as that deficiency on our accrued actuarial liability for the pension. And why we wouldn't know, I wanted to note that at least, so that I think that everybody under Gatsby is going to be reporting that.
I mean, I can let the auditors talk about that at length. I will say, as a township, as an NGO type of entity, we are in better shape than many of them. There are multiple states in this country that are technically very insolvent and broke.
Quite right.
As a township, we do have this issue. It is something that management has been working toward and trying to resolve.
Right, right. And we have a, basically a 30 or 40-year program of catch-up to, to bring this, like, you know, Bill's laid it out in detail over the years. And I don't know how, we actually paused it at one point, I guess, last year or two ago. But if we're in good shape and we don't, and we're in better shape than, than maybe we don't need to do these catch-up payments anymore. But if we are, if we aren't in that good shape, then, you know, I want to talk about that and recognize where this group is compared to others, of its peers, and what the implications are.
We don't have the, we don't have the numbers at this time to compare you with others. But you're not in any worse shape than other townships and municipalities that are out there at this point. You're doing, it's a very wise decision that you're making to try to do some catch-up payments. And more and more townships and municipalities are doing that. They are taking the steps to try to address this. And just so you know, I wanted to give you some quick numbers. The net pension liability is at 2019 with 16 million. And the net OPEB, which is the other, other post-employment benefits, that liability now has to be on there as well.
Right. Thank you.
And that's, that's up to 47 million.
47 million dollars of liability for other post-employment benefits, and then 16 million for pension. And what are we funded at right now for those two?
That's the net pension liability.
That's the net, that's a net liability. So we're, so we're short 67 on OPEB and 16 on pension.
47 on OPEB and 16 on net pension.
Net pension. So what's 47 and 16? Three, 63?
Yep.
63 million. I, I think it would be good, Bill and Bob, to get a sense of what the peers are at Tridifern and Lower Marion, and then maybe some other, some others, to, to see where we are expressed as a percentage of revenue or, or something else. And, and I know we're making, I know we have a plan to, to correct it over the decades. But again, to revisit that need. And if, if everyone, if we don't need to, then, you know, this is not something I get overly anxious about, a 30-year program to catch up. I don't know if anybody else is doing it. We might be the only ones. But if that is the case, I want, I would like to disclose that to not only the rating agencies, but the auditors talk about it, and the public should know that. And so I leave it to you for your thoughts on that.
Yeah. So immediately, the rating agencies and obviously the auditors are very well aware of the liability. I can, I can say anecdotally, when we have our rating reviews with the rating agency, we use Moody's. They echo the sentiment that our position, when it comes to the net liability on those two items, is not unusual or outside of the parameters of our, our neighboring townships or similarly, similarly sized townships. Is it still something that needs to be funded? Absolutely. Because these are obligations that'll be owed to somebody at some point in the future. So the continuance of the, the funding plan makes sense from that regard. The, the, the rate at which we pay it is something we've debated quite a bit in this room. We've, as a group, elected for the, a more longer-term approach. I think right now, the horizon is somewhere in the early 2050s. So it's not something that we're, we're trying to fix overnight, nor probably is it. We should, we should definitely rely on the market to help assets grow and reduce the tax burden on today's residents for something that they, they probably won't be here for when it's actually owed and paid out. But at the same time, it is an obligation, and it's something that, that we should continue to take seriously when we, we're making our funding decisions. Aside from the dollars and cents and the reporting requirements, a couple important notes that we typically talk about when the subject comes up is that the OPEB plan for all civil, or the OPEB benefit for civilian employees ceased. So the obligation is not one that's being added to with new civilian hires. So that took effect in 2013. So any new hires from that point moving forward, there are no post-retirement health benefits for, and that was something that our rate union negotiated with the township, recognizing the liability and how it would impact the, the future finances of the township. So they deserve a lot of credit for partnering with us on that. And then from the police perspective, there were reductions in what the benefit level is to new hires, to limit the number of folks that are eligible for the benefit upon retirement. So it, at one point, it was wide open, and now it's more restricted just to the employee and spouse. So even, there's some restraints made on the benefit itself, which over the long term will make a significant impact as well. So when we have this discussion with our, our peers and our, you know, our auditors and our rating agencies, you know, for the most part, they applaud the efforts. They know it's, it's well-intentioned and that while it, it shows as a, a rather large negative, or net liability, that's pulling the, the statement of position for the township into the negative, it's, it's something we're aware of and working on.
Again, as part of this, the concepts we're talking about as a country is, is these big net liabilities. And it's not going to get better in 2021 or 2022. We're, we're facing massive shortfalls. And so we could, we could see these grow. And, you know, really, what is the long-term, but right now, the long-term plan is to pay this off. I think that for 2021, for the next year or two, we're going to be going the wrong way on it. But if we're not, then we're going to be squeezing someplace else. So we'll talk about that, I guess, in September. We'll start talking about those items because we're going to be short this year on revenue.
Almost certainly.
Almost certainly. So-
Is there, is there any other commissioner comment to the resolution regarding the audit report?
I just wanted to bring up one point before you do, just something that's new in your financial statements. It's both in the auditor's report, and there's a subsequent event note. This is new because of COVID-19. There are specific paragraphs that are added regarding the uncertainties regarding the effects of COVID-19 to the township that we, we can't really put in there what we think will happen. It's very, it's too nebulous at this point. So I just want you to know that those are in your financial statements and in our auditor's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, that's a standard note, right? Every, every, every auditor has the standard in every, every audit report.
Is there any other commissioner comment? Is there any other staff comment? Any public comment? All right then. I am going to call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2020-89, board acceptance of the 2019 audited financial statements and independent auditor report, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Commissioner Booker, I'm sorry, how did you vote?
I voted aye. But I would, in the future, if we could get this at least the night before, the day before, or something, I would have liked to peruse it. And I did not have an opportunity, but I sat at the, at the, at the dais here. But I voted aye.
So I'm going to say that that motion, that resolution passed by vote of five to nothing with Commissioner Enderly and Commissioner Larkin absent. Thank you very much, Mr. Kane. Thank you, everyone involved with this process. We're certainly very proud of your work. Okay. Item C, Shade Tree Commission Fall Tree Planting Program, requesting authorization for receiving bids. Will this be Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I just want to thank Eileen Brett and the Shade Tree Commission, who've done a lot of work, meeting with folks, business owners in Wayne, to determine where we can plant some trees. So the, there is a memo from me, but the, the body of the memo is actually from Eileen Brett. They're looking to plant 120 to 140 trees this fall, with roughly 60 trees targeted for the WBA, 50% targeted for residents. Overflow areas will be in the parks, and we would be consulting with Tammy Cohen to make sure we have no conflicts. The timing is to start after this meeting. We're going to, if this is all approved, we get authorization to go to bid. We're going to start advertising and working out the bid. One of the things I just wanted to point out, and one of the reasons we're coming to you, is this year's program is different than most. So as you know, in most years' programs, it's all done on residential properties within township street rights of ways. Well, this year, like I noted, over 50% of the trees are slated for Wayne. So they are on state roads, they are on commercial properties. There's actually 16 slated for the middle school. So we just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. A lot of trees on Lancaster Avenue, and really what this is, is a continuation in, in some sense, of the tree planting program we had last year, where the township planted over 65 trees, as well as paved all the parking areas. So this is just a continuation of that. And yet, half the trees are still going to go to our residents. So the, in short, what we're looking for is for the board to give us the blessing to move forward in this fashion and go to bid for this project. And the budget for this project is roughly $84,000. That's what's in the budget. About 1,000 of that, or 1,100, might be used for advertising on various forms of media, and the rest would be on the trees.
Thank you, Mr. Norsini. So I attend the Shade Tree Committee meetings, and they have certainly done a lot of really good work, a lot of good collaborative work with the Wayne Business Association in putting this plan together. And they also do have a very robust advertising plan in order to reach out to the residents so that people can understand how they can access this program and how they can get tree for their front lawn. All right. So I will, we don't have a resolution or a-
Just a motion.
You just need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So I will make a motion that we authorize receiving bids for the Shade Tree Commission Fall Tree Planting Program. Can I get a second?
Second, or a second.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any commissioner comment?
Yeah, just one, one quick question, Steve. So actually, I think the, I forget the gentleman's name, sent me an email about some of these trees. And they said that my street, Rockingham, would, would be a, a good place for them because there's a little bit of grass and then a sidewalk. If there is a tree there that's too tall, or we don't have wires in front, can they elect to have a tree replaced? Or is it only new planting? And because of global warming and issues with, maybe this is not a question for you, but that's the first question. The second question is, I guess it's mono, we have basically these tiny little crab apples on, on the street. Would we be having different species because of disease and whatnot? So those are two questions.
So in this contract, on the commercial areas in downtown Wayne, we do actually have removal as part of the contract. I don't think it was discussed on residential properties where you pay the $35. And that's something I'll bring to the Shade Tree Commission. But these species were chosen by the arborist, the Shade Tree Commission, on all the criteria you noted. Proximity to wires, how warm we're going to be in 10 years as the, the growing zones lines change, we're accommodating for that. And absolutely, we don't, in most cases, go with a monoculture.
Is there any other questions or concerns?
I have just the one question, the overall question. You know, the trees, and we just saw it for these last two storms, and it's, it's not the shade tree, trees that we're planting right now, I think that are the problem. But we have a big problem with the, the weed trees, the Norway maples, I guess. They are very brittle. They break off. They cause huge amounts of damage, and they're very dangerous. And we're putting in more trees. These trees are, are, are really a worry. And then we, we spend millions of dollars to try to remove trees. So any comment on that, Steve? Could we have the Shade Tree Commission look at where we can thin out some trees that we, that we don't find desirable?
Well, Commissioner, there's a whole host of reasons why you want to plant trees that we've all heard, carbon footprint, pollution, stormwater management, aesthetics, shade, property values. There's quite a few reasons. If you wish to undertake a program where trees are maintained, you know, that where we go through and prune trees within the right-of-way, that would be something I, I would recommend. I would talk to the manager. That would be something for the budget-
Yeah, we've talked about that. We, we need tens of millions of dollars to do that. And, and we, every storm, we, we have power outages, we have trees all over the place. We have, public work spends days or weeks, engineering, utilities. I mean, it's, we're getting, it's getting out of hand.
So I think we know the management of the, the township trees in the right-of-way are, is an issue. We have discussed that. And there was a suggestion brought up, do we turn that back? And certainly, I think that is something that, you know, do we turn back the management of those trees to the residents? And I don't know the answer to that. But the, I think at one point, we did ask Shade Tree to collaborate with us on some of those ideas. And maybe we just need to try to get back to that and see if that's something that they are willing to, you know, work with and, and advise us on.
Maybe, maybe I'll show, actually show up at the next meeting, so you're not by yourself. But specifically, these, these trees that grow so quickly, I think it's a Norway maple. It's these maple trees that are, that grow on their own. They really are causing a problem. And we've addressed it with the ash trees. We've addressed it with tulip poplars. We've addressed bamboo. We've addressed new trees. We've addressed, we're addressing right-of-way. But we still have a major problem with trees and the damage that they cause. And so we, something that Shade Tree, I urge them to take up.
Just to be clear, it's not all trees in the right-of-way that cause the power line damage, right?
Yeah.
We're only addressing right-of-way.
Well, that would be all we're responsible for. We cannot tell people what to do on their private property.
Steve, will any of these trees go-
We did say no-
We did say no bamboo, Commissioner.
Steve, will any of these trees go and replace the trees that have died on Morse Road by the Wawa?
I think that's something we could bring up to Shade Tree Commission. I don't, there was none slated for that, if I remember correctly, looking at the spreadsheet that Eileen provided.
Yeah, we're down to three trees there, I think.
And maybe we should contact the management company. The township did plant those trees and did do the sidewalk project.
Yep.
I think the management company, just a personal opinion, should have some responsibility to that.
Well, are those trees still under warranty?
No, that project was several years ago. Actually, your predecessor was the commissioner when that went in, so.
Well, yeah, next time you're over there, take a look. It doesn't look very good.
Sure.
Okay, is there any other comment to the authorization for receiving bids for the fall tree planting program from the commissioners? Any other staff comment? Is there any public comment? All right, I will call the vote. All those in favor of requesting authorization to receive bids for the fall tree planting program, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Enderly and Commissioner Larkin absent. Moving along, we have Resolution 2020-82, authorizing the award of a design contract for the stream bank stabilization at 210 Gulf Creek Road to Carol Engineering in the amount of $12,543 funded by the Storm Water Fund. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Commissioner. So in your packet, there was, we have an easement agreement dated November 7, 1957, regarding 210 Gulf Creek Road. And in that easement agreement, basically states the township is responsible to prevent encroachment of Gulf Creek on the property, if that includes a retaining wall. So in 2012, we did build a retaining wall there, and that connected to, at what was the time, a very solid stone wall. Well, after the storm of 2018 and subsequent large storms, that stone wall is failing. So what you have before you is for the design only of approximately, roughly a 12-foot extension of the wall we installed. That will cover, that will replace what was once a fine stone wall along this gentleman's property, and then the township's requirement for a wall should be complete at that time. So we're asking for your authorization to use Carol Engineering to do the design and permitting for this wall extension.
Okay, may I get a motion to approve Resolution 2020-82?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Okay. Is there any commissioner comment to this, or any questions or comment from the commissioners?
Steve, what's the cost, do you think, of making the repair? $12,000 for the design, but any idea what the repair is going to be?
Actually, Commissioner, so there's other work involved with this. There's some stream bank erosion south before the wall. So we're going to do some armoring of the bank leading up to the wall, as well as there was some scour on the wall. So it's a little bit more, it's outlined in there, it's a little bit more than just the 12-foot extension. As part of their design contract, they're going to come back to us with an estimated probable cost of construction. So when we go out to bid and we come here to ask for your permission, I will have that number.
Understood, but any kind of sense of it right now, with, you know, thumb in the air?
I honestly don't.
Is it going to be like, maybe $10,000 will be done?
I think that would be great, but no, it'll be much more.
Be like $100,000 or $200,000 or $300,000?
More than $10,000, but I don't really have a number for you at this point.
And how about some of the other houses that are upstream from this location on Gulf Creek there? I mean, actually, it's bad from the bridge at Bedolph, you know, all the way down.
I mean, Commissioner, I can tell you, since the storm we had last Tuesday, I've talked to no less than nine people who have severe stream bank erosion. And in my nine years here, I've talked to dozens of people who have stream bank erosion. The only reason we're involved in this specific project is because there's an easement agreement from 1957. But for the rest of the creeks, unless there's some contractual obligation, or it was a previous township project, which we've had before, that has failed, all those stream banks and the streams go through private property. So unless it was, if you might remember, we did one on Gulf Creek near Willow and Radnor Street. That replaced an existing township wall that failed. But not, we don't go up and down the stream banks because there's many, many miles of stream banks that need remediation. And unless the board wishes to change the method moving forward, that we're responsible for all those stream banks. Right now, it's private property and the homeowner is responsible. So that's why we're only doing specific projects. It's not through a park or contractually bound.
Are there any other commissioner questions or comments? Any staff comment? Any public comment to the resolution on the floor? Okay, I will call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2020-82, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Enderly and Commissioner Larkin absent. Item E, Board Authorization for the Emergency Short-Term Ithaca Extreme Bank Stabilization at 790 Robin Hood Road. Before I toss this to Mr. Norsini, I would just like to personally thank him. This is a significant and severe situation that was exacerbated by the storm, the tropical storm that came through last week. And Mr. Norsini responded instantaneously. If you want, there are pictures of this. It is, it is a very serious situation. And I want to thank you, Mr. Norsini, for gathering the team that you gathered on such short notice of engineers, to first of all, make sure that Pete, the family in this house could remain in the house, because initially, they were told they had to get out, and also to assess the damage and make this remediation. So I'm going to toss this to you with sincere thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. And as you noted, there are pictures in the packet. So this, to Commissioner Booker's point, this was a previous township project done in 2001, which Tuesday's tropical storm, again, if you, I have pictures if you want to see them, or if you just looked in your packet, you can see the damage that was done to 790 Robin Hood Road. This is Valley Creek. Sorry, it's my misinfo that went to Peggy for Ithaca, it is Valley Creek where this took place. So we actually have two issues here. So I met with the township manager and finance director to move forward on the emergency repair, which was $10,000 for Gannett Fleming to basically memorialize plans that we came up with in the field the day after the storm, and for Terra Structures to come in and implement those plans, which is a short-term solution, basically in the form of large precast concrete blocks, two by two by six feet, which they've already started. So that's the part one that we're here for your approval for. And hopefully, that project, and we call that the short-term project, will be done within the next two weeks. And that is just to stabilize the bank so that the house doesn't move. I guess if you saw the pictures, you can see how precarious the house was to the stream bank. The side was completely exposed. But in my professional opinion, we are still in an emergency situation. So if we install this short-term like we're planning to do, I'm requesting the board allow us to move forward, still on an emergency basis, to provide a permanent fix for this situation. And what that permanent fix involves is two items. One, I have a proposal from Gannett Fleming. We're actually investigating two different items for the permanent repair. One would be retaining walls down both sides of the street, or if feasible, I feel, I personally feel, and I believe my colleague does also, that the best method is if we can pipe this creek beyond the house to avoid any future issues with this house and the creek. And so before us, or before me, we have a proposal from Gannett Fleming that goes two ways. So they would do some feasibility upfront to determine if we can even do a pipe project. It is a massive, these are big pipes, that would go past, that would take the stream past the house and take the issue of eroding away the house out of the picture. So, and then we also have just a more robust, permanent retaining walls up and down both sides of the stream to protect the house. So for the culvert extension, to extend the pipe beyond the house, there's considerable work that involved with that. The not-to-exceed is $145,000 from Gannett Fleming. This would be done on an emergency basis, not only with Gannett Fleming, but with DEP. And if, in doing that option, there's quite a bit of survey, there's hydraulic study, geotechnical borings, you know, so literally, there's a lot of, you know, there's probably $40,000 or $50,000 worth of that investigation. If we go with the stream bank stabilization solely, it would be in the $75,000-plus range. So what I'm requesting from the commissioners is two items tonight, is that we can award Gannett Fleming the not-to-exceed culvert extension cost for design of $145,000 on an emergency basis. If during the process, we determine that the pipe cannot be extended, we drop down to the stream bank stabilization cost, which is, you know, $70,000 less from a design standpoint. Moving forward, again, in my professional opinion, this is still an emergency, once we get this done, get this short-term project done. Would like to be able to award to an emergency contractor whatever design we come up with that's the most feasible, whether it be the walls or the pipe. And the reason I'm asking for that is, under an emergency basis, DEP moves very quickly with us, and we use Gannett Fleming to keep them abreast, they move very quickly with us, and we can get this going. I would, my assumption is that if the board allows us to move in this process, by November, we could start constructing this project. If we go through the normal channels, the DEP permitting and all that, I think the best we could go to bid is next spring, which would put us into next summer for construction. And even though I think our short-term repair is a good short-term repair, as you can see in the past few years, we've had our share of unusual rains, tropical storms, remnants of hurricanes, and that's why I personally feel that we need to get this project moving and done so quickly.
Madam Vice President, if I could just, real quick, as a matter of process, if I could ask the board to consider the emergency temporary work being done by Terra first, and then we can have a discussion and address the longer-term emergency repair that Steve referred to with Gannett Fleming. Just, Steve did a good job of explaining exactly what's going on, but how it relates back to the charter is, any expenditure over $7,500 that's deemed an emergency can be authorized by the manager immediately and subsequently brought back to the board. Given the danger and loss of property to the resident, we authorized the movement on the temporary fix on Wednesday of last week. So we would need specific board recognition of that transaction first, and then we can have a discussion and direction on the longer-term emergency fix. I think that's just, that'll help be a little bit cleaner in the minutes in memorializing the emergency nature of the funds already authorized.
Oops, sorry. So the first thing we will do then is make a motion to approve the...
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Can we?
Because now this relates to the...
Can we just get a motion on the floor first?
Yeah, yeah, you can get the motion.
For the, so I'd first just like to get a motion on the floor for the emergency temporary work, which Steve has been completed, or you guys are still working on that?
I expect that to be completed late next week or early the following week. So it has started, the wall has started going up.
Okay. So, and just to clarify, so we had something on our agenda back in July, was it July or one of the June meetings for this, to do a project there, because this is caused by a bad project done by the township 20 years ago.
So the project that was done, basically, in this case, has failed, but we saw those, we saw that this, it was time for this to be replaced and extended. So that was actually going to be before you tonight until the tropical storm came through.
Okay. And in that tropical storm, basically, the Gabion walls were completely dislodged and...
They fold, they...
Failed.
They moved, they rolled over, and then this really serious erosion against the house occurred.
Okay. So the first motion that I will put out there is to approve the emergency temporary work at, for the stabilization at 790 Robin Hood Road. I will make that motion, and I just need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, so we have that on the, I will just ask one question. Do we have a cost on that, do we know? Or is that still...
So it was in the memo, it's $150,000 to Terra Structures and $10,000 to Gannett Fleming. And I will, I do want to just note that the $150,000 is actually in a written quote from Terra Structures, but we literally designed this in the field that day, the day after, myself, Gannett Fleming, and we brought in a contractor to get their availability of equipment and material. So as we move forward, there may be changes that we see are advantageous to the project. So that cost could slightly rise, and if that occurred, I would go directly to the manager before we got, for that same emergency-type approval.
All right. So the first thing is the emergency temporary work, and that's in about the neighborhood of $160,000. Okay. Ms. Commissioner Farhi?
So I, I'm having a lot of moving parts here at this time, seeing this. So it's $150,000 plus $10,000 plus another $160,000?
No, it's $160,000 total.
Total, okay. And how much, if you didn't have this emergency, how much would it have been in the budget for a storm?
Well, it was, if it wasn't an emergency, we were looking at $75,000 for design, and again, depending on the path that we chose, it could be $300,000 to $500,000.
Okay. So if it's, so it's going to be $150,000 just to fix it, and then another half a million to shore it up even more?
So what we're calling this is the short-term emergency repair.
Okay.
And yes, it will be $160,000 upon, if the board awards the next phase of this that Mr. White was discussing, it would be between $70,000 and $140,000 for design. And actually, we haven't gone the pipe route yet, so part of what Gannett would do would give us an estimated probable cost of construction. But either way, this is a six-figure project for the permanent repair.
So should we, I mean, you're looking at, is the cost of the project going to exceed the value of the house?
Good question.
I mean, is it worth looking at, I don't want to say condemning, but making some kind of, I just want to put that out there. I don't want to see us have to come back and the project's only $650,000, and before you know it, it balloons to $850,000 or $900,000, and it would have been better for everyone if you bought the house.
I don't anticipate it being that high.
But, yeah, no, I understand, but I don't know what that number is. I don't know what that number is, but is that something that the township should look into?
What we could do is if, so we don't know what the cost of this project is unless we award this next emergency phase to Gannett Fleming. Once that feasibility is done, and it is, a path is chosen for either the very robust retaining walls, or to pipe it and extend the culvert beyond the house, we'll then have estimated probable cost of construction, which you then could compare to the market value of the house. My recommendation would be to have some numbers in hand before you start to make that comparison.
But it's going to be $150,000, $160,000 before we even know how much more it's going to cost us?
It's going to be $160,000 to stabilize the bank and make sure the existing dwelling does not crumble and go into the creek.
Got it. If the house was condemned and removed, then would you need to shore this project up? Would we still need to do retaining walls and whatnot?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
If, if the house was removed, the house is, you know, it's either condemned or eminent domain, whatever, would we still need to go with this further with this project?
You would still...
Is this, this area just for one house, or is it for all of Robin Hood? That's my question.
Specifically, what we're doing, the $160,000, is specifically for this house.
Okay.
But even if the house were to be purchased and... But even if the house were to be purchased and demolished, there'd be work to do there.
Would you still need to go through the other, say, 400,000, or would it be less than that?
Uh, it depends on what the project would be. So that, that whole lot could be turned into a stormwater management facility or some type of floodplain, and I have no idea. I wouldn't leave it in its current state
Correct.
if the house was demolished. Because honestly, if the house is demolished, the wall itself, what it's holding up, will be gone. So there would have to be work done. We couldn't just walk away from it.
And if you walk away from it now, what's the liability on the township? If, you know, God forbid, something catastrophic happens?
If we stop tomorrow?
Yeah.
Why don't we talk about liability in executive session instead of speculating?
Agreed.
It's a stormwater management problem that, you know, the township has some responsibility. But, I mean, I, I like Commissioner Farhi's thought about maybe, maybe the people that are living, not condemn it, maybe they want to sell it. I mean, you know, the FEMA and municipalities are buying land and houses. I've done a couple along the Delaware River, houses that have flooding and the, they have in-ground septic systems and they get washed away. They, they, you buy them out of the floodplain because you can't ever permanently fix them. You know, whether this is a good candidate for something like that, Steve, it's really up to them.
Solicitor, we actually discussed this early on, just internally, when the whole project came up, but we don't have the numbers to go with. So we don't know the, the fair market value of the house or what the resident may be, may, may be willing to sell it for, if at all. And we don't know, until we go a few steps further, we really don't know what the cost of the project would be so that we could perform the analysis of total cost of the township fixing.
Township's going to have $160,000. It doesn't matter how you cut it.
That's right off the bat.
Just, so the next storm doesn't wash away
Correct.
some part of the house and the people that are living in there. But beyond that, you're talking about several hundred thousand dollars to do a permanent fix, which, depending on the size of the storm, may or may not be totally guaranteed either, right?
I, I have confidence in both, in both, whether we go with a stream bank stabilization or a culvert extension, to a point, right? I mean, if a hurricane comes through
Right. I mean...
we use the term, you know, none of our infrastructure is necessarily going to take it. But I will tell you that the, the wall on Gulf Creek that was installed that we're extending has done very well through all these storms. So they're, they're robust. So my recommendation would be, if you want to have the actual, if you want to be able to perform this analysis, we need to go further in the design to determine what the next step would be.
Right.
What that cost would be. So we can, we can come up with a fair market value for a home, but we don't know what the construction project portions will cost moving forward to make that analysis.
Well, my only, I mean, comment, it, it might be worthwhile to see if there's a willingness to be bought out. You know, there may be FEMA funds. I mean, you know, I don't know that we've looked at that. There might be state funds. I know FEMA does kick in money if you're in the floodplain. I'm assuming that's, is that in the floodplain, Steve?
I, I don't know, Solicitor. I mean, it's very close to the creek, but I don't know if that's considered floodplain. We'd have to pull up the FEMA plates.
So we would, but wouldn't we still, that creek goes under the street there, correct? I mean, we are going to have to do something.
So Valley Creek comes down from Yorkshire Road, crosses under Robin Hood, and then continues under Roberts Road, which is the culvert project we're building now with Loftus Construction. So this, you know, starts up by, I guess I, it's, Yorkshire Road is a very visible portion of it. So whichever way you wish to proceed, I mean, I, for the short term, we need to get the short-term repair done while whatever decision is made because the house is in a precarious situation right now, even though it has started. And how you wish to proceed moving forward, my recommendation is we do some legwork on what these things will actually cost because we're banner-ing about numbers, which we really have no idea at this point.
Yeah, and to have any kind of meaningful conversation with the owners, we would need to have those numbers. So. All right. So I'm going to go back to the, the first motion, which is to approve the emergency temporary work and the, for $160,000 total. And that's a firm number, correct, Steve?
As I said, there is one caveat, though, Commissioner. We, we literally designed that in the field and memorialized it. So as we go through it, there may be changes that are field changes that need to be needed, but that's the general magnitude of the project.
So for $160,000, with the possibility that you would still need to come back for additional authorization, or go to the township manager?
Yes, ma'am. I would go to the township manager.
Okay. All right. So to approve emergency temporary work right now for $160,000 with the caveat that it could increase and that then additional authorization would be sought from the board, and this work for 790 Robin Hood Road.
Can I ask one more question, Commissioner Varaskey? This is stormwater fund-eligible. Just want to get that. Okay, okay. So it's not coming from the general budget? Okay.
All right. So is there any additional Commissioner comment?
One additional comment, we, we just have a reassessment, so you do have a number of what the county thinks the value of that house is as of last year. So it's brand-new. It's a good number. I am concerned with, the use of the stormwater fund is supposed to be for community projects, and we keep dipping into it for these things. It's just troubling that this is what we're using. The concept with the stormwater fund that we've tried for the last five years is to figure out what the most priority projects are and for the most benefit for the community, and then use that millions of dollars, a million dollars a year we collect towards that. And instead, we just keep chipping away at it with the, these emergencies, and it's one-offs. So I would prefer that we not use stormwater funds, notwithstanding that it is eligible. If it's an emergency, it's a township expenditure, I, I don't think that this is what we should use that, that for, for an individual thing. It's individual house. I would, I would encourage this board to, to, to really get a sense of our purpose on the stormwater fund and to, and to be more diligent and more strict in how we use it. I, I know I'm going to lose that argument, but that's what I would encourage everyone to do. Also, along the lines of what we are discussing, and I, Steve, I brought to you actually some sketches that I, I did of, of homes that we should look at to try to improve the stormwater management for the township in these bad areas. We really, I believe, need to have more area, and it's necessarily going to mean some reduction in, in houses, especially these ones that flood, so that we can, we can do that.
Commissioner, we've done that. So as homes have come up along Gulf Creek, we've looked at the purchase, the sale price of the home versus the cost-benefit of what stormwater management. So we do look at that. Based on what you said and just on our own common sense, we know when, when we're alerted to one of the homes, we do, depending on the area, we do check that out, and we'll toss that to Meliora, have them run the model, and say, what is our benefit? And some, to date, there hasn't been a great deal, but to your point, it could be done over time.
Over time.
Yeah.
And also, my, my point would be that it would be a more systematic approach at it that would probably involve a condemnation or a threat of condemnation because they always try to jack up the price when they hear something like that. So, I mean, it's almost, it's so hard for that to be cost-effective, but here's one where it might be, where we're looking, where it could easily be half a million or more, and, uh, might not be worth it to, to, to do that.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comment? And everyone is clear on what we've got in front of us right now in this kind of part one of this?
It's clear as mud. You know, it's a major commitment, right? It's just, it's just hopeless. You know, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? Say no? I mean, think about it. I mean, that's a practical matter. What are we going to say no? I guess we have to do it. I mean, my hands are tied.
I agree. I think it's, it's a lot of money to be spending for something that you're fixing. It's a real short-term fix, and this is just, my fears that we throw, bad money after even more bad money.
So we are voting on a short-term fix.
Yeah, Madam Vice President.
Yes, we are acknowledging that.
Yeah. Had we not moved forward with the immediate shoring up of the wall, there would have been imminent loss of property to the, to those residents and their family. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's not an ideal situation, but it's one that had to be made, and it's, it's one that we own since that's our wall and work that, that we were responsible for. So, yeah, I, I don't disagree that it's not ideal, but it's money that had to be invested, at least on a temporary basis, to fix that wall up, at least buy us time to, to make the larger decision about what we ultimately do there.
Okay. I think I called, I think I called for staff comment. And is there any public comment on this? All right. So I am going to call the vote on the emergency temporary work to 790 Robin Hood Road. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Larkin and Commissioner Enderly absent. So then, item number two will be the authorization of, and should I, should we call this a not to exceed? $140,000?
$145,000, yes.
$145,000.
And that would take in, if it was determined that the, the most feasible, that we could do a culvert or slash pipe extension, that's the higher end. If the design pointed towards the most effective being the stream bank stabilization, which is basically retaining walls down the stream, that would be in the $80,000 range.
And this is just for the design work, the hydraulics, the...
Hydraulics, hydrology, survey. We're talking 300 feet down the stream, making sure nothing backs up the stream across Robin Hood.
Um, and to lay the groundwork and, and to get us a number to what would be the best project to do there, which will then give us, I think, some discussion items for, to the point of Mr. Booker, Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Farhi. You know, at least we could have some conversations with the residents. But even still, this, the money to, to do this, Steve, you know, it will help us, help inform us even for, for a future project, correct? Like, once we do the hydrology and all that kind of stuff.
So you'll, you'll know what's going on in that stream there. And, you know, it includes the emergency GP 11 permit as well as the permanent GP 11 permit. There's survey involved, there's grading involved. There, there's a lot with the pipe extension because we need so much data to make that decision. Less so if we just use the walls, so to speak, through there. And the byproduct of this will be estimated probable cost of construction for either method, which then could be presented to the board to weigh against the market value of the house and if you wish to approach, if you wish to have to approach the homeowner for sale.
And do we need to consider in this kind of equation as well, the, the township infrastructure, which is the road there? I mean, that road is our road, correct? I mean, that is right there.
So this project replaced the culvert that went under Robin Hood Road. That's where all this stems from in 2001, right? So we talk about the stream bank. The stream bank is a byproduct of the fact that the culvert under Robin, Robin Hood Road was replaced, and that's what all this is from.
Okay.
And by the way, we saw an exposed sanitary sewer main while I was there the first day, so there's another little piece to that.
Oh, by the way. Aye, okay. So I am going to make a motion to approve a not to exceed $145,000 to do the engineering, hydraulics, all the potential permitting for a permanent solution to the stream bank issue at 790 Robin Hood Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that sound appropriate? Okay. So I'll make a motion and look for a second for that. So there is not going to be a second?
I'll, I'll second it. I don't know if I can support it at this time, but I'll, I'll second it for you.
So everyone understands that this is just to do engineering. This is not to do the project.
Sure.
And if we want to have a discussion with homeowners about the, I guess, cost-benefit of the, in some way, the township acquiring that home or it being acquired, we need to have information.
Sure. I, I mean, I, I think, well, I think we have some ballpark numbers. My, so this, is this Commissioner comment at this point?
Uh, well, I guess so because we have a second. So there's a motion on the floor.
Okay. So my, my question is, we've already spent 160. Now we're going to spend how much more? Another 1...
145.
145.
Not to exceed.
So, and then, I, I mean, we're already 160 in the hole. We're adding another 140. I would like to see if you can, you know, I, I mean, it's not that hard. See, just go there, see what they want, if that's even an opportunity. I, I would like to see this maybe tabled until, until after that. I, I can't vote for it now. I think that we need to have a conversation before we start just throwing more money at this. Maybe, so we're going to shore it up, we're going to make sure it's safe, we're going to fix the emergency. You know, we're not going to be too far out with the price of the house. They're not going to say it's worth 20 million, and we're going to say it's only 100,000. We'll be close enough, and is that margin, is that, that threshold, the amount that we're talking about, and then maybe to win one for both?
I have a question that maybe piggybacks off this. Is there anything that's discoverable in the emergency work that we're committing to now that would help us inform the next phase? So I know that they're in there working, but is there anything that will come out of the shoring it up now that will help us with these discussions at a later time without going into hiring an $145,000 worth of investigation?
I mean, this was, this was done literally, you know, I was out there that afternoon. I had the consultant and myself and a contractor there, eight o'clock the next morning. Work started Thursday. So I, I don't, I, I'm not quite sure what you're asking, but what I can tell you is, whatever we do, what we're doing now, isn't going to give us any leg up on what we need to do in the future.
And this work that we would be doing in this not to exceed, so this would engage and involve DEP with this process, which we would need to have there?
So this would be done, what we're doing now, what the board just approved, is done under an emergency permit with DEP. And we would move forward on this, if so approved, the permanent fix under that same emergency permit. And the permitting is pretty detailed. That's where the hydraulics and hydrology comes into play. So it's an emergency permit, and it's looked at that way. If we were to go in this as a regular project, that permitting could be six months plus. In this case, DEP works very well with municipalities when, when they're in a situation like this, and it moves very quickly. But is that permitting, emergency permitting, and in the end, it's a final permit, all that's done by Gannett Fleming. It includes the construction specifications, the bidable plans, the project manual, the project manual, civil design, structural design where needed, stream bank stabilization, ENS plan. It, it becomes just like any other project. There's a lot of moving pieces to it. It's just in a very small area, in a very linear form.
I'd like to make a motion to table this. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
If you want a second, I'll give you a second to discuss it.
Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry. Commissioner Varaskey, do you have anything else to say? I didn't mean to cut you off. You...
So I, I guess, so we don't have discussion on motions to table. So if there is the, a motion to table and there's a second, then we will take a vote on that.
Well, I think in this case, if we table it, we have to know what we're going to do if there's any danger. If there's no danger in tabling it, I'm, I'll second it. But if, if that's going to cause imminent harm, then...
No, because we're doing the emergency fix. This is, I think that we need to, I think that we're putting the cart in front of the horse. I think we need to talk to the homeowner before we start investing another 140-plus thousand to look at investing each... homeowner before we start investing another 140-plus thousand to look at investing even more money on top of it.
I think that sounds right. I just wanted to make sure.
What I'm hearing is that it will be a significant delay of six months or more if we don't move now under this emergency permitting. And if we do that, we're looking at five more storms and, you know, it may end up ruining the, the temporary fix that we just...
We could begin construction this year. You will not begin construction this year if you just move forward it as a regular project. It would be, I think I'd be conservative in saying May, June of next year to begin construction.
So, what I'll say is there's always a risk in doing something or not doing something. Like, I, I get that and I think...
Well, I guess, is that a risk you're willing to take with your house?
Well, we have an emergency fix. I think that we need to talk to FEMA and do a little bit more homework, and we can bring this back at the next meeting. I don't necessarily think that if we're one month behind, it's going to, one month behind is going to cost us six months.
So, if we come back to this board September 14th, we were hoping to be under construction in early November. That would put us in early December. So, I don't know what that would do depending how the winter goes. If we're just starting it at that time, that could cause some delays, but I, I don't know.
This is not for the emergency project?
No, this is for the, well, what's before you now is to move forward on the permanent fix on an emergency basis.
Sure. But this temporary fix will not hold for six months?
I, I couldn't tell you because I don't know what type of storms we're going to hold. It is a short-term repair. A permanent project, which is the one we're working on now, did not survive. So, I, I can't tell you that this is going to take anything that comes down the pike.
Well, I mean, so, so it sounds to me that if this short-term fix isn't even good enough, then the house, then we need to look at other options, which is...
Commissioner, you asked me, is it going to survive? I can't tell you it's going to survive another tropical storm of the magnitude we had Tuesday.
Okay.
Because our permanent structures aren't surviving the tropical storm we had Tuesday.
Okay. So, what I'm, what I'm saying is that there's no guarantee that the emergency fix is even going to hold if we have another terrible storm. Again, I just feel we're throwing bad money after bad. That's my opinion. So, I, I, I will, I will make a motion to table this.
Second.
There's a motion to table at the second part of this emergency authorization project for 790 Robin Hood Road. All those in favor of tabling, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Sorry.
Okay.
It's tabled.
So, moving on, Mr. Nocini, what would be the next?
So, the, the board did authorize the emergency repair that I met with the manager and finance director on, so that the short-term fix will move forward. I have a feeling that the residents of 790 were watching this meeting, so they may have an, an idea of what we discussed. And I'm on the job site every day, so tomorrow morning, bright and early, I'm sure we can have a, the beginning of a discussion on this.
So, with that, I believe we need to have an executive session regarding this, and we need to have it very soon. So, with some options, because we need, this is not a joke to these people, nor is it throwing good money after bad.
Please, it's not a joke to us either. It's not, it's not, nobody's saying it's a joke.
Excuse me, Commissioner Booker. I am asking you not to interrupt me. Please.
No, you hadn't, but, but, but no, you just, you just said that this is serious to you and, and not to us. It's serious to us. Don't say it's not serious to us. That, don't, don't impute my integrity like that, impugn my integrity. We can bring it back the next meeting, and we need to have a more clear direction. That's what we're saying. It's very serious.
Commissioner Booker?
Don't interrupt me.
Thank you. Well, too late. You already interrupted me, so right back at you. Mr. Rice and Mr. White, I would like us to schedule an executive session regarding this immediately so that we can move forward and have some sort of information to provide to those residents.
We're looking at dates right now.
Thank you. Moving along, ordinance 2020-16, introduction prohibiting the making of unnecessary and excessive construction noise during certain hours. I will make a motion to approve this, and I will let you know that I will be amending it.
Second.
Okay. So, this was, I brought this forward. This was my, this was something that I wanted to bring forward. I had spoken to many residents, residential homes, who had brought forth concerns about the construction noise and it's starting so early. Since that time, and since this has been posted, I've heard from others who are in the construction trade, who live in our township, as well as those who develop and do work here and have construction projects in the township. And it has come to my attention, and I am hearing those who are putting this forward, that the idea of starting at eight o'clock is a potential issue. And to Mr. Kachansky's credit, he did first suggest seven to seven, and I think so did Mr. Rice. And I said, no, let's do eight. So, I am going to amend this ordinance 2020-16 and push that time, this start time, back to seven. So, we have changed it to be, and I, I think it's written really strangely, but no noise between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, if I'm making that motion to amend. And what, so that's what I'm going to, so I am, so we have a motion to approve the ordinance. I am making a motion to amend it, to make the hours 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So, I'd be looking for a second on that.
Second.
Did you second that? Okay. So, is there any discussion on the motion to amend the ordinance?
It would be helpful if we had a, a black line showing the strike with a change in language from the existing. I can't really remember what it is offhand, so I would ask for that. But I can say, in general, 7:00 PM is too early in the summer hours to end construction work. And I think, I think that currently, it says 9:00 PM.
It is nine.
Right. And, and I think that, I think that in the summertime, they, we, there's a lot of projects that go until nine o'clock, and especially on an individual or a home, house-by-house basis. So, I think seven is too early in the summertime especially.
So, the other change that has been made to this, well, let's, we need to vote on the amendment. So, the amendment is pushing it back to 7:00 AM. So, it would be 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And then, we can go back and talk about the 7:00 PM time, because that is what was originally in the first, the ordinance that was put forth. So, any discussion on amending and pushing the time back from eight to seven, so 8:00 AM to 7:00 AM?
I just have one, I guess, point I want to bring up. So, when Villanova was doing the massive construction for their addition, and I, I don't, I don't know if this applies, but it's going to apply. If they can't start work till seven, that's great. Sometimes they get there at 6:30 and they start idling their trucks for a half hour. I think that we need to look at, along the li, along the lines of, like, no noise is no noise. So, they can't be there, you know, talking, drinking coffee, smoking cigarettes, idling their trucks, kind of moving their tools around, getting ready. And I just think that, that's important as well, because you can say seven o'clock and say, well, we didn't start construction. We were only doing X, Y, and Z. And that's going to create a lot of noise. Kevin, can you, if you don't mind?
No, absolutely.
I mean, there were some issues. Am I correct with the truck?
There was, and we find that on many construction projects. So, when we have those issues, we encourage our residents to call 911, report it as a non-emergency, and police will show up and have that disturbance stopped.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comment on the motion to amend? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay. All those in favor of amending, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Okay. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, the motion to amend passes four to one. So, that brings us back to the original ordinance. So, the changes that were made is the time for construction was pushed back from 9:00 PM, Mondays through Sa, Saturdays, am I correct? Yeah, Monday through Saturday, pushed back to 7:00 PM. So, that means there'd be a good 12 hours of construction work happening every day, except Sunday, which we've, and holidays, which we have added time because originally there was nothing with regards to, there was no time. We've now added on Sundays and during the week, and I think a lot of this is for, you know, our, more for our residents who want to do work, who want to mow their lawn, who want to do things like that on Sunday or the, or on holidays. And we've also defined it as township holidays. We've added that in. They can do that from 10 to 5:00. So, that is what we have with regards to the ordinance, the amended ordinance now, 2020-16. So, any discussion on that?
So... I think you did a motion and a second then.
No, we already did that. We got, did that before we amended it.
So, I'm, I'm just confused. So, are we saying, under construction work, residents, this applies to residents?
Well, doesn't, can't residents do construction, their own construction and landscaping and things like that?
Well, I, I mean, that's one of my questions, is I don't really understand. There's no definition of what construction is.
Any person, firm, or corporation, or their agents or employees, it applies to doing construction work?
So, is mowing the lawn construction work? Mowing the lawn is construction?
No, no, mowing lawn would not be...
That's not part of it.
Yeah, it wouldn't be covered. This is just construction work.
So, is a landscaper fall under this?
Nope.
What about a landscaper who does hardscaping?
No. No. It's not construction work.
So, okay, now I'm getting...
The way I'm reading the definition, it's about the operation of machines.
Yeah.
Operation of machinery, appliance, equipment, or hand tool which emits noise beyond the premises on which it's being used. But it doesn't, so, you know, to the question about, I know in the title, it says excessive construction noise, but in the definition of construction work, it doesn't seem to set apart that this is work that is, you know, what a layman might think about construction. Machinery could be a lawnmower. So, it does not seem to me to differentiate between the two the way it's written, other than using the word "construction" in the title and the definition. So, if we want it to only apply to what we think of as building and not maintenance and, you know, lawn work and that sort of thing, I think, I think that needs to be another amendment in here unless there's another ordinance that stands side by side this that I'm not aware of.
Can't we just add that no noise can exceed the property line? I mean, someone wants to hammer in their house, it shouldn't be illegal. This is about noise. It's not about not doing construction. So, as long as it doesn't...
Well, it does say that. It says, with tool which emits noise beyond the premise upon.
Right.
Oh, okay.
But it doesn't say what kind of tool...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Or appliance or equipment, or hand tool. So, hammer in your house.
And it doesn't apply to landscapers, so a high-powered mower makes more noise than a guy hammering outside his house.
So, I think we had talked about this at some point when it was first brought up, that a noise ordinance should be a noise ordinance. So, noise doesn't matter the source of the noise or the purpose of the noise. It matters how loud the noise is and how disruptive and disturbing and annoying and all of those things. So, you know, perhaps this becomes a broader conversation about what we're trying to get to rather than limiting one industry or one type of activity.
So, and I, I don't disagree with you on that. The one reason that I brought this forward because, is because there have been so many, and I think Mr. Rice said to us, how many times have we written and rewritten noise ordinances and all of that, and we never seem to get anywhere? So, it was the idea of, you know, can we kind of do this in little chunks and get to something?
Well, actually, when you brought it forth, you said it was because a neighbor, it was because people were being woken up early at 7:00 AM, but we've gone back to 7:00 AM. So, we're really not changing the crux of the problem that was brought forth in the beginning.
So, no, what I said is that people were listening to construction noise in that time for about 14 hours a day. So, we've pushed back the time that they have to stop, and it has to be 7:00 PM. And then, what we added was something, because it was probably happening anyway, is that, you know, people were doing this work. And I will tell you, the main people that I heard from bringing up concerns about this were landscapers. It wasn't even so much construction, because obviously, they feel this applies to them. So, because it's machinery, and then there's nowhere else in this, the overall, and this is not the full ordinance, just by the way. This is only a piece of it. There's nothing else that applies to landscaping except for this. It's, this is the noise, that construction noise.
So, I think that this is a, a good blueprint to start with. I think that we can see if this works, and then we can talk about other industries as well, which would be landscaping, and I'm sure there's a whole host, nuisance dog barking, et cetera. So, we should see how this goes. I'm, I'm fine with it. If it's not working, we can make changes to it. But I think to Commissioner Borowski's point, we're here. We want to be somewhere else, and this is a, I think this is a fair, definitely a, a fair way to start. So, it's something that I can support at this time.
And, and the other concern I have is allowing construction on Sundays, which is the day that most families are actually home together and would prefer not to have noise. So, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that's going to be popular with, with residents, that you would have construction on Sundays, nor do I think construction companies are going, all of them would use Sundays to have their workers come out. So, I'd, you know, I'd prefer to keep the, the ordinances that we have now that prohibit construction on Sundays in the township.
So, does our current ordinance actually prohibit it? It doesn't prohibit it?
It does. It does.
It does?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you, Commissioner Farhi.
So, then, but then, if this does apply to landscapers, then this applies to my husband who works all week and can only mow the lawn on Sundays?
I, I would never, I would never approve anything that tells a homeowner that he can't mow his lawn on a certain day.
And, and this doesn't. What I can, what I can state from my experience is the superintendent has informed me that this will not apply to landscaping and a person who is cutting their lawn or blowing the leaves, even if it's somebody that they hired. And I've had this instance come up several times over the last two years, a homeowner is complaining about another homeowner who is using a leaf blower at 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night. And my original information from Kevin was that this did apply to that person, and Superintendent Flandigan said that this does not apply and that they do not enforce this for landscaping.
Can I, can I just make a comment? My understa, this is construction noise. This section, this is one section of your noise ordinance. There's, this is section five. You have six sections that cover different types of noise. Section one is a general prohibition against unnecessary noise. Would apply to everything, including landscapers, if they're out in the middle of the night, at midnight. Section two is music instruments, stereos, and other sound-producing devices. Three is sound trucks and loudspeakers. Four is horns. Five is construction work. Six is refuse collection. So, you have, you don't have any land... So you have, you don't have any landscaper, I don't.
One, one doesn't cover landscaping?
Yeah, I don't, well, I think the general prohibition on noise would cover landscaping noise, if it's done at 1:00 AM in the morning. I think that would fall within unnecessary noise prohibited. Is it necessary to be blowing your leaves at 1:00 AM in the morning? I don't think so.
Okay.
So.
But what about 9:00? It doesn't say 9:00 or 7:00? Buster Mike.
We, we've had a couple of dog barking cases in that section people have been cited under. So, but this is just dealing with construction work. It does add Sundays and holidays, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And it does, as Lisa pointed out, the hours are reduced from 9:00 PM to 7:00 PM, so you have a longer overnight, noiseless time. And, and that's all that's been done on this. I don't think it applies to landscapers. I think the general prohibition could apply, depending on what time of the day and what they're doing.
Wouldn't it be more clear to have a companion, oh, five A and five B, which would be construction and then landscaping and other maintenance noise? And it could be almost the exact same provision, so that you don't, you know, again, what was cited to me was construction work means construction work that does not pick up landscaping. And unnecessary noise under section one doesn't pick up landscaping that's going on at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night? Well.
Sorry, noises or sounds which are physically annoying to the comfort of any person or which are so harsh or so prolonged as to use, time, and place, as to occasion physical discomfort. It's a pretty broad subjective standard.
You're gonna take that to court for, for somebody cutting, cutting their lawn on a Sunday? I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we win that one. Well, again, we could make it clear, and I think that the issue that we, Lisa's, as pointing out, and that I face with my constituents, is landscape noise needs to have a similar restriction that construction does.
And that's up, I mean, that's up to the board. I mean, that's a policy decision. When you discussed this last time, this is all that, there was any consensus on, we drafted it, you know, advertised it. If you want to bring something else back to add to it, you know, that's, that's up to the board to make that, that determination.
Commissioner Booker, just to be clear, you're not advocating that a resident isn't going to be able to cut his lawn, his or her lawn on a Sunday? Because Kevin, I'll, I'll tell you what's gonna happen, you're gonna have that resident who works till 7:00 PM every night, has kids, goes to sports on Saturdays, and then he's gonna let his or her lawn grow to 12 inches, you're gonna have the neighbors contact you and say, can you cite them to cut their lawn? And they're gonna say, no, I don't have time because the township only, doesn't allow me to cut my lawn on a Sunday, and I'm a homeowner, I pay taxes just like everybody else.
Or, or the township won't let my landscaper come and cut it on Sunday.
Right, it, you know, it could be either one of those.
It's the same noise.
But it could be, and what I, I'm not specifically saying that, that that would be correct, and I don't think it would be. For, for a homeowner, he should be able to cut the lawn on Sunday, he or she, if going to do that. But you could have a companion to this that has slightly different provisions, so that you would strike that new line for the, for the landscape provision, for instance.
What about a tree-cutting service?
I think if you look at this ordinance, it's actually expanding the time that you can do construction. And if you're applying the general noise ordinance at the same, it's going to allow the cutting and the, and the noise on a Sunday that it used to be prohibited. So this is expanding the hours.
No, no, what, what I'm saying is, I, I, I don't want, I like the idea of no construction companies or, construction companies working on Sundays. But to tell a resident that they can't do work on their home on a Sunday is too far for me.
Well, what's, mine, mine is a suggestion, it's not here in front of us, and if, if we did cover construction, and then, all, all I'm suggesting is that it would be, make it clear, because my belief is that this construction, 2005, does not pick up landscaping, that the section one is overly broad and doesn't do what we wanted to do, or that the neighbors that have spoken to me about it wanted to do, so that we make it clear. And I would also, Superintendent Flanagan's right here, if, if he, if he thinks that we can enforce section one, say at 7:30 or 8:00 against landscapers, then it's gonna be, the police are gonna have to go out and enforce that. So if he, if he's, if he abides by that, then I think that's efficient. But it is subjective on what is unreasonable, and I think that that's a problem for us, that we, we really are gonna have a hard time enforcing with our constituents. But Chris, go ahead, what, your, your thoughts on that?
Commissioner Booker, I brought up before about commercial operators of landscaping. We did take it to the solicitor, Mr. Rice, just to confirm, and during the regular work hours, we did not cite, because it is not, in our opinion, construction. We also talked to Mr. Konchansky. To Mr. White's point, or John Rice's point, a couple times, we've had a couple of people who have been mowing at 1:00 in the morning using a small mower, they were cited for noise because it was disrupting the entire neighborhood with multiple police complaints. So it was by the resident's choice to call us. So we do have options under straight noise without defining every trade that could be out there, such as a tree crew versus a landscaping crew versus a hardscape crew. So we would just want to meet with the solicitor with the final document to make sure that it is clear and easy to point to a resident or a commercial operator of what our ordinances are, and then we can follow through with it based on that. But right now, the noise allows us to have the ability to stop somebody mowing it, again, I'm giving an example of 1:00 or 2:00 AM in the morning. I hope I'm answering your question.
No, no, because the issue is not at 1:00 in the morning, it's at 7:00 or 8:00 or at night. And it's, and, and it doesn't specify in section one what is unreasonable. And what is unreasonable or causes pain to one person might not, and you use the example of dogs barking. Again, that's, those can fit within that, but landscaping, I think, if we're, if we're not gonna cover it, if we're not gonna cover it here, then I don't, I don't think we cover it sufficiently on number one.
Yeah, I don't think you do either, unless it's at 1:00 in the morning.
So, so as I said, and Commissioner, you bring up, Commissioner Booker, you bring up some good points. So as I said, like, you know, kind of like bits and pieces, so maybe working on a landscaping part of that, Commissioner Booker, since you have heard from so many residents about that, and again, I have not heard from anyone complaining about landscaping until they thought this applied to them. So perhaps would you like to, to work on that, or, or Mr. Rice? And then we could add, that could be another piece, and we can kind of build this out.
It would be very simple, yeah, I could certainly suggest something to the solicitor for what I'm thinking, but it would, again, it would be 2005 A and then 2005 B, and it would, it would be almost the exact same language, except for it would be, it would, it would, so it would probably include the Sundays, right? And it would be, it would be almost exactly the same.
But let me, let me just give you one proviso on all of this. Noise is noise, okay? I know residents in this township that have been working on their house for years, and other municipalities. They start working on it, they pull permits, they never finish the work, they're residents. So if they're out in the middle of the night with a chainsaw, we gonna not go after them?
Still have that under construction or number one?
Or you have a general ordinance for that.
Or they're out doing landscaping, are we gonna, you know, are we gonna go after them? If they're making as much noise as a landscaping company, what's the difference, other than they're a resident? So.
Yeah, we're beating that horse, but here's the example. Sometimes people will put the lights on in their backyard.
I'm talking about one instance? I mean, come on.
Yeah. Sometimes people will, will put their lights on in their backyard, and it, it could be 10:00 at night, and they could be cutting the back lawn under the lights, because they happen to have exterior lights. A neighbor, then if they called, I think that Chris should send a guy out and say, hey, you gotta shut it down. If it's a 1:00, the same, but if it's at, if it's at 7:30 or 8:00 on, on an August night, I think he's okay. Or Sunday, even if it's on a Sunday, a homeowner would need to probably be able to cut his lawn till 8:00 or 8:30 on an August night, on a Sunday. So it should be written to cover those things.
I don't, I don't think that we're all that far away, I think that we need to, I mean, I'm happy to vote for this and see where this goes, and when we revisit it with more ordinances, we can change it. You know, Sundays may not work, or if you have a big project and they want a waiver, then we can come in, like with the CICD, and say, hey, you can't work on Sunday if you want X, Y, and Z. But as of now, this seems, it doesn't seem overly obnoxious where you're gonna be blasted with noise, but if that's the case, then it'll, it'll have to be remedied and changed. But I think this is, this is fine for where we are.
Just on this particular one, contractors don't, and they do want to work until, they want to work until 8:30, 8:30 a lot of times.
Sure.
So even on this one, I'm still against this one, because I think the 7:00 PM is too early for construction in the township.
So, so I, I do have some real, see, contractors are very resourceful, they know what they can do outside and they know what they can do inside. So unless it's, you know, putting up, you know, putting up studs and, you know, banging a roof on, there may be some stuff, electrical stuff that they can do on the inside as well.
What about, what about the homeowner who's got the tile saw out in the garage up until 10:00 or 11:00 or 12:00 at night?
Well, I mean, you know.
Then they don't need to do that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what to say, what, you know, how about the, you know, the parent that has a, you know, a three-year-old kid and their kid needs to sleep? So it goes both ways, Rich.
Okay, I'm gonna, I think we've debated this enough, I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote, so on the amended version, which pushes it back to 7:00 AM, so that is a good 12 hours of work on a weekday, and adds in some opportunity for people. So if somebody wants to be out there with their tile saw, installing tile, which my husband has done, on a Sunday, they're not going to be in violation either, so.
Public comment?
Yeah, I will, yeah, I, I'm getting there, did you think, you think I've forgotten? I'm going to say staff comment, is there any staff, additional staff comment on this? Now I will call for public comment. Baron.
Hi, Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. A few points, first off, even the, I think the title of this ordinance, and I think actually Maura was starting to allude to this, it's the making of unnecessary and excessive. Those words should not be in here, because this is talking about, it says during certain hours. It's either noise or not, the way this is written. So that also kind of subjugates your second and third warehouse clause, which refer to those same things. The way the ordinance is written is talking about no noise during certain periods, prohibition, not excessive and necessary, but just noise. So just from a more administrative standpoint. Secondly, from, just a quick one on the landscaping, because hardscaping was brought up, and a lot of landscapers, and I actually had this next to us, they do patios, and that's a permit issue, and then they're, they are sawing, you know, flagstone in half and having the cement mixers and everything, so, you know, I don't know if you want to do it on a permit basis or whatever, but hards, some of the hardscaping is, makes more noise than even regular landscaping. I'm glad that the amendment was done for 7:00 AM, not personally, because I don't like to hear noise at 7:00 AM, but that's such ingrained with the construction industry, and getting them in there by 7:00, so that typically, not on larger projects maybe, but they're out of there by 3:00 or 4:00, and I'd rather have that start early and be done by the time most people want to enjoy things. I think also Solicitor Rice was referring to, you know, noise is noise, so you're gonna have a very hard time enforcing or a validity issue if you're talking about construction noise by residents versus construction noise by contractors, because construction noise is construction noise, just like in zoning, you can't differentiate between who owns the property versus the use. I do have a problem, a big problem, with the Sunday allowance, which isn't allowed there, it's not only Sundays, it's allowing it Sundays and holidays. So you look at a case like, you know, Mark Janisak, who was just here, and now he might have to double time if he's gonna have to get rid of that wall, so any neighbors there might for two or three months have to put up with no relief whatsoever. And I've had a project next to us, one of our rental properties where we're staying there, which was like seven-plus months. So maybe Sundays takes a month off of that, but that's still six months of noise every day. I mean, you're thinking about the one-offs, about, okay, what about the, the resident? But you've got to think about the construction projects where it's a three, four, five, six town home or single-family homes, where you're having that noise, and they can't be doing the inside noise, because they're doing the foundation, or they find huge rocks like they did next to us, so it's a month and a half of drilling them out. So not allowing any relief from neighboring people, neighboring residents, even on Sundays or holidays, I think is just absurd. You've got to give, got to give them some relief. I can go either way on the, I know Rich is making the point on the 7:00 PM versus 9:00, you know, that's probably the most reasonable place to cut it, is at the end of a non-Sunday holiday. You know, 7:00 AM start, cut it at 7:00 PM if you feel you want to cut that off as opposed to 9:00. But to allow it on the Sundays and holidays is tough. And what you're also gonna do is you're gonna pit neighbors against neighbors, because if my country, if I'm doing renovations, and maybe I'm not even staying there, which we moved out for ours, the neighbors might want to be putting pressure on the homeowner to say, we want you to tell your contractor not to work on Sundays and holidays. And then that puts them in a bad position with their contractor, because maybe their contractor wants to make that up, or they want to get that job done quicker, so they're gonna work three straight months, every single day, making noise. So I just think the Sunday and holiday idea is a horrible idea, and, you know, to me, the way it's written now, before any changes, is appropriate, but if you want to make it to the 7:00 PM instead of seven, instead of 9:00 PM, I think that's fine. But Sunday and holidays is just a horrible idea, for, for many reasons. Getting it out of the land, you know, if you want to do a separate landscaping one to cover that, I don't think that, personally, I don't think it covers the, the lawn and the normal lawn maintenance, but it would cover hardscaping where they're doing actual construction and things that do require permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Excellent points, Baron.
Okay. So I will go ahead and, are there any other comment? All right, I will go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2020-16 prohibiting the making of unnecessary noise and excessive construction noise during certain hours, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three to two. All right, and we will continue to look at this issue. Stormwater sanitary sewer project funding and possible advancing refunding of the general obligation bond series 2012. Mr. White.
Thank you. I'll, I'll start the discussion by noting that since two of the commissioners aren't here tonight, they're, they're also in wards that have significant amount of flooding and projects that have been, already been identified. I, I don't know if we want to spend a whole lot of time tonight diving into these details only to, to do it again when they are here. So in fairness to them and to all of you, it, it might be best to hold off on, you know, the substantive part of that discussion. What I would like to, to touch on tonight and maybe get the ball rolling on, if you approve, is that because market rates are where they are, and given some emergency federal legislation that has authorized advanced refundings for a period of time, we have an opportunity to advance refund one of our series 2012 bonds, which at rates as they were a couple weeks ago, produce net present value savings in the ballpark of, or north of 8%. Or north of 8%, which was just shy of $90,000 a year. Our threshold for making refunding decisions is usually at 4% net present value. So if it's gonna generate savings greater than 4%, it's usually a transaction that is worth the cost of going through the exercise and paying the pricing agent, paying the underwriter, paying the bond attorney, and then realizing the savings. So with rates being where they are at, I think it makes sense to proceed with the advanced refunding. And the two resolutions as part of this discussion item, 2020-90 and 2020-91, would allow us to engage both PFM and Cozen-O'Connor to begin that process. So that's part of what we were gonna talk about. The other part is for those board members that have been here for a couple of years, you're aware of the discussions we've had through the years regarding stormwater projects. And I had sent out a memorandum to the board just this morning, so I... No expectation to have read it before tonight. But what was identified in that memorandum were a couple of key factors that exist... That have existed and continue to exist that I think need to be drawn out in order to move this conversation forward. First, and most importantly, through the years, for the last two years, the board has authorized the design of roughly a dozen different stormwater projects that range in cost, estimated cost of $200,000 to almost $4 million per project. So when you add them all up, we're looking at, just for the projects that have been authorized to be designed, of just shy of $16 million in estimated cost. Our stormwater fee generates $1 million per year at its current rate of $29 per unit. So if we're just looking at stormwater within its fund, and I know there's some disagreement about exactly what that fund was to be used for. But if we look at the stormwater management within that fund, there's no way that the fee will generate enough cash to install just these projects that have been designed. There's still a whole nother portion of the project list that has not been designed yet. They're just projects that have been identified through calls for service. So it seems the most likely outcome under any scenario is that there's going to be a borrowing component needed to generate the funds to install these projects. I went into further detail in the memorandum on repayment, potential repayment through the fee. That's one option. The board could elect to adjust millage rates or real estate taxes to fund it. Those options are a little bit more open. Because at the end of the day, no matter what we do, the bonds would be backed by the full faith and credit of the township. But, I mean, that in real two-minute summary is keying up the discussion. Is... We've got roughly a dozen projects that are coming to... Either already have or are coming to a conclusion in terms of design. Some of them have some significant stormwater positive impacts. Some of them deal with a little bit smaller area. But under no scenario do we have funding to move forward with the projects. So tonight's discussion, had we had a full board, my hope was to kind of push the ball forward on a funding discussion and hopefully some direction from the board on how you'd like to address it. So I guess for tonight's purposes, given where we're at with the members not present, I would ask that the board consider the two resolutions on the agenda for the purpose of proceeding with the advanced refunding documentation and look. And then we will circle back on any kind of long-term funding on stormwater in September.
Okay. So I will... So I will need a motion to approve Resolution 2020-90, which will authorize the township manager to engage PFM to provide financial advisory services for the township's proposed bond issue for new money for stormwater capital improvements and/or advanced refunding of the General Obligation Bond Series 2012.
So should we strike that stormwater piece?
Yeah, if you feel more comfortable, yeah. Strike the stormwater piece. We'll just look at the advanced refunding.
So moved.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second for advanced refunding.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah. So on the advanced refunding, I guess, where interest rates are now, why not advance refund every available issue? I guess... I wonder if Wolf has looked at all of those. But we typically... I don't remember a single time we did an advanced refunding and set up an escrow with the township. What's the implications regarding our debt capacity? Because I think we have two outstanding bond issues then. And the concern I've heard is that you're paying interest twice because you're borrowing interest, paying it on the old bonds, and then paying interest on the new bonds that are the advanced refunders.
Yeah. So those are good questions. And they've all been contemplated in the projections of those, the net present value savings. And it would require escrow to be established, not within the township's chart of accounts, but held at a paying agent or some third-party company who would... Most likely a financial institution that would take care of housing the assets and making the payments on the date of the actual call instead of at whatever point in the future that is.
So what was the... What were the 2012 bonds originally issued to fund? Do you remember? What do you know?
Well, I don't have the genealogy memorized other than I'm pretty... I'm very confident that in 2012, those were refunding of bonds that were originally issued some years even prior to that.
Okay.
So we would be advanced refunding refunded bonds.
So what was the call on the 2012s?
The call...
Was it 10-year call?
Bob, I may need your help with the actual call. The maturity is 2037, or 2030...
So do we have a 2022 or 2023 call? So it's a year... It's only a year escrow. So it's not too far out, is Mike... How far out is the defeasance escrow gonna be?
2022, yeah, 10-year call.
2010-year call? All right, so it is a 10-year... So just a year, all right.
Yeah, the dots are connecting, yes.
And is it premium at the call?
Well, the...
It's all... It's not so baked in there?
It's all factored in the sale.
What does it matter? What are the downsides? I talked about some of the downsides there. Any downsides that you see on the... What was the amount of the 2012 issue? Total principal amount?
Yeah, I'm not sure. In terms of legal downside, the risk between now and when we actually pass the ordinance and go to market is that interest rates move on us, and it may become no longer... Interest rates might make it...
I don't think so. I think you're good.
I tend to think that that's the case, too. They hit record lows two weeks ago, so... And the economy's not moving that quickly. But that's the downside. The rest of the transaction is secured in the legal documents, and the obligations are... I mean, I guess in some wild scenario, the underwriter or the ultimate buyer could default on us, but there's provision to protect us.
Is it bank qualified? Or, I mean, it'd be just like a open bond issue, I guess.
If we do this by itself without any consideration of the stormwater, then yeah, it would absolutely be bank qualified.
Be bank qualified. The concern I'm thinking about is you're gonna have a defeasance escrow, and you got it... Somebody's got to watch that they do it right. So that's the concern, is the management of it, and nobody's doing any funny business. People used to do yield burning. Have you ever heard of that?
Oh.
You know, there was a bunch of... There's all kinds of stuff that goes on. So that's something that you and Bob will have to add to your... Because you haven't done it. We haven't done any of the advanced refundings that I recall.
No, we haven't, because the federal government did away with them years ago. Or interest rates were so good on the first call dates that we didn't have to worry about advanced refunding. And, yeah, I mean, that's part of what we're paying for when we engage Cozen-O'Connor, is to protect the township from the legal side on those kind of misdealings and any kind of...
Cozen won't help after we issue the bonds. It'll be up to you guys to make sure that that all...
Yeah, Cozen... From the day that the ordinance is passed to the day that we reach the actual call date, so the advanced period, well, yeah, Cozen will be engaged, and they are in constant communication with us on those goings-on.
Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioner comment on this? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution 2020-90, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Larkin and Commissioner Enderly absent. Resolution 2020-91, authorizing the township manager to engage Cozen-O'Connor as bond counsel for the township's proposed bond issue for new money for stormwater capital improvements. We're taking out stormwater for capital improvements and our advanced refunding of General Obligation Bond Series 2012.
Well, we'd take out capital projects, right? It's stormwater capital projects, the whole thing would come out. It's just for the advanced refunding, isn't it? Or am I mistaken?
Yeah, no, so the title would be authorizing the township manager to engage Cozen-O'Connor as bond counsel for the township's advanced refunding of GOB bond series 2012.
Okay, so no, so taking out stormwater.
So moved.
You have a second? Okay. Any commissioner discussion? Okay. Any staff discussion? All right. Any public comment? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2020-91, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four to nothing with Commissioner Abel off the dais and Commissioner Enderly and Commissioner Larkin absent. Resolution 2020-92, encouraging all citizens to wear... Oh, just... So when it comes to the discussion around the projects, you know, I think we did really well with the last bond for the capital projects when we put some parameters. You know, like we looked at things that impacted safety, things that had grants that were... The projects were grant-dependent with a match from the township. And there was a third criteria, and I forget what it was in this moment. So I know that this is gonna be a difficult discussion. We knew that that was gonna be a difficult discussion, but I think once we kind of put those parameters around, it was helpful. So I don't know if those fit for this or if there's something else, but that might be a way to help kind of narrow it down because we aren't gonna be able to do everything, so...
Understood, yeah. Yeah, just thinking about it immediately, those parameters might not necessarily fit here because all of the stormwater projects, you can make an argument, are for safety. Maybe between Steve and I, we could take a look at the projects. I mean, the first criteria is that they're already designed or authorized by the board for design, which elevates that project to a level of... At least it's being considered, and it was at one point deemed important enough to pay money to design. And then the next is maybe some component of number of homes affected or the ranking system that we applied to these projects last year during the special meetings that we had on this. So between the two of us, we'll draft some... Or put some thoughts down and submit it to the board for your consideration.
I appreciate that. Also, one just more comment on that. I disagree that the stormwater funds are not tied with this. In other words, we could have always issued bonds for stormwater projects and probably should have if it was that important. The tying of the regular fee, the theory was, and I disagreed with it at the time, was that it would provide a readily available source of revenue. And I suppose what you talked about before, Bill, was, well, we'll pledge that to pay the bonds, the debt service on the bonds. And that could be the case as well. So if that is the... If that's the plan, then that should be so stated that the revenue of $1 million a year is intended to pay the interest and principal on bonds to be issued. But that's never what was talked about. It was... This was what the funding source was going to be. And if that is the case, then we could always issue bonds. Nothing ever stopped us from issuing bonds for stormwater projects. We could have done it a year ago or two years ago or next... It's not... It's completely separate and outside of the stormwater fee. And if we have those projects that are necessary, should be considered outside of the stormwater program.
Okay. Any other comment? All right, so before we move on to H, I'm gonna step back to F. Ordinance 2020-16. So our solicitor has kindly informed me that ordinances need four votes to pass. Since it was a 3-2 vote, it does not...
I hate to revisit the noise ordinance, but for ordinances, you need a majority of the full board. You need four votes. Rich, I didn't hear your vote, but I was told...
I voted no.
Yeah, you voted no.
It was a no. So on a 3-2 vote, the ordinance fails.
Okay.
Pardon me? Isn't this adoption? Oh, it's introduction.
I think it still needs four.
No, on the final adoption, you need four.
I go unanimous.
Introduction, you're okay. I'm sorry, that's my...
Okay. All right, so...
I've drafted so many noise ordinances, I thought we were gonna finally adopt one.
All right, so this is... That was just introduction. And...
The introduction's fine, you know.
Okay.
You're looking at Section 209G of the Charter. There's a couple of different sections that deal with majority of the board for final adoption of ordinances.
Okay.
So I'm gonna advertise it as it was approved, then.
Okay, great. All right, so we're good. But then we will need four to enact it. Okay. On to item H. Resolution 2020-92, encouraging all citizens to wear face masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Commissioner Farhi.
Thank you. Do we need to... Okay. Well, it's pretty straightforward. Masks, social distancing, and just being smart, it saves lives. So I've heard a bunch of conflicting things from the state, the federal, and I get a lot of calls from my residents that want to know what's going on here, if we're even addressing it. And we need to address it. So with the recent rise, I just think it's common sense, and people need to wear masks, that's all.
All right, so can I get a motion? Are you gonna make a motion?
Make a motion, too.
Any commissioner comment?
I have some prepared comments.
Well, now's your time.
Anybody else want to go first?
Nope, feel free.
Okay, back in March and April of this year, we were all told, as the public and as local officials, not to wear masks. Even Montgomery and Delaware County Health Department did not recommend wearing masks, and neither did the inimitable Dr. Fauci. And I know this because I publicly suggested on my show that people wear masks, which was even forwarded by Commissioner Farhi. So I appreciate that. I was criticized quite viciously for making such a statement as I did in March.
It was completely irresponsible.
I was... I made the irresponsible comment that we should wear masks and that we should keep the economy going. I was criticized quite viciously at one of the meetings here for suggesting such a thing. But in fact, we had many fewer cases of COVID at the time when we were not wearing masks. Where were the scientists back then? Were they wrong back then? If they were, why are we still listening to them now? Were they lying back then? If so, why would we allow so-called professional scientists to lie to us and still listen to them when they're supposedly telling... and still listen to them when they're supposedly telling the truth now? Some scientists, such as Dr. Fauci, have made the case that they were lying about the masks back then, but they're telling the truth now. How can we be sure? Why should we trust these people? And when so many things have changed in the instructions and when so many times what the experts and epidemiologists had said was correct, they've gone back on, why would we still be trusting these people? Moreover, I've read at least one scientific article by a physician that concluded masks are ineffective for stopping coronavirus. The molecule is too small to be stopped by a mask. And in any event, the continued adjustment by most wearers of masks renders them ineffective. Listen, we could always prevent problems from occurring. For instance, we could stop most highway accidents by making the speed limit on the highway five miles an hour. We could eliminate almost all deaths on highways. But we're not going to do that. We recognize the benefit to the public outweighs the risk of the harm through accidents. Masks worn by the entire population in all outdoor public instances causes many people severe anxiety and other psychological trauma. We should not dismiss the damage we are doing to our society by requiring mass compliance in this manner. We will always have risk. Living life is a risk. Requiring people to wear masks by this board is merely requiring, and in general, requiring the public to wear masks is merely requiring people to demonstrate submission to leftist groupthink, smugness and pomposity. In our zeal to present even one death, which apparently we had 23 in Radnor, and question if those are people who died with COVID or of COVID, but whatever it is, the number is 23. In our zeal to prevent even one death, we have effectively ended all relevant life. We've cut our schools, our camps, we've shut everybody down, we've cut the economy. We must stop with the virtue signaling on this board. It only shows division and prevents real and meaningful action for our constituents. Continuing with these types of superfluous types of resolutions that are not directly related to our function as commissioners of the township separates the township on issues that we need not take up and which we have no authority or jurisdiction. Even this resolution is just a suggestion. So why do we bother? If the governor wants to require masks, let him make the dictatorial edict. And then let him provide the funding to enforce it. This is not for this board. And I am not going to make a recommendation that all people wear a mask in Radnor at all times. It's unreasonable and it's not a proven it's not a proven prophylactic for this. Finally, there are many, many issues that people face day to day. We cannot establish this standard of we're going to wear masks. This will be the standard. We're going to wear masks for the rest of our lives. Our children are going to wear masks. We're going to have bubbles. We'll never get back to normal. When will this end? When will there not be another one that you want people to wear masks or stay inside or go into a bubble? It's unreasonable. We need to take back our lives, our township, our economy. And we start that by not passing this resolution. Thank you.
Is there any other comment?
Well, I'm not going to support this resolution. I've made it very clear since I've been on this board that I will not support non-binding pieces of legislation. This has no teeth to it. It's merely a suggestion. I didn't pass Commissioner Booker's pro-life motion a few weeks ago. I didn't support the pro or the anti-gun letter that went to the governor. And I'm going to continue that consistency and not support this. I also, you know, I've got some concern that this, what we do tonight will be used to politicize the issue. The school board's meeting tomorrow night where this issue is on the agenda and, you know, I'm willing to, you know, I think there's a strong likelihood that what we do tonight will be used as some sort of example or demonstration that the school board needs to enact a full mask policy, which, you know, I don't even know that we want our decisions to weigh in on what the school board does. So for several reasons, I'm going to oppose this resolution. One, you know, we have enough partisan issues. We don't need to make this another one and it does nothing to further the discussion of the issue.
Any other commissioner comment?
I will support this. I believe that it is a recognition of care and concern for our community. And I do believe that resolutions are a voice of the board, whether or not it's an enforceable ordinance. And I do believe in science. So I think everybody should be wearing a mask and I think it's the right thing to do from this board. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment with regards to this?
Well, just one comment. Does Commissioner Mulroney, does she believe that the scientists were telling the truth in the past when they told us not to wear masks and that they, they're lying to us now or that they were just wrong and incompetent? What's your opinion on what was said in the past?
I don't think that, I don't know that that's.
I think it's relevant. I think it's relevant. She said she follows the.
Going to ask for.
The science has changed, obviously.
I'm going to ask if there's any staff comment on this? Is there any public comment on this?
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue. If the children going to school are going to have to wear masks, if the colleges, I know of at least one that is coming back, they're all going to be required to wear masks. And I don't think this should be a suggestion. I think in the spirit of this, it should be mandated. There is no doubt that masks are helping. At least it's making you aware of what you're doing and what you're saying. And I'm going to pull the age card. I wasn't going to do this. I am 83 years old. And every member of my family has died from COPD. And I have no desire to die from COVID-19. Do I like wearing a mask? No. Do I like staying home? Not so much. For the last five months, I have gone to the store because no one can buy the food that I need. And I have gone to the garden. I haven't been out for dinner. I haven't seen people, I haven't been to people's houses. Do I like it? No. But until we have a vaccine, we are not safe. And I think it's important for the township to support the four colleges we have in this township. There are 9,000 people coming back to Villanova this week. I know that for a fact. I got it from someone at the university. They're all going to wear masks. Are they going to wear masks if we don't wear masks? No. They're going to think it's a joke. We need to do it for the spirit of the community until we get a vaccine that's effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other public comment on this? All right, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2020-92, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two. Any reports of standing committees of the board? Okay. Summertime. Any new business? And our item A for old business has been pulled and that we will hear that at a later date, I believe. Any other old business? Okay. Final public comment? Any public comment?
Baron Gemmer, South Wayne. Can I get some clarification on the old business that was pulled? Because part of the problem I had with that, not only the presentation that was done last meeting, but that was proposed for here, is the neighbors are not getting any notice. So if this is, you know, when Rich had his subcommittee.
Well, yeah, we did send a notice of that subcommittee.
The subcommittee, so the way the developer chose to do that was they went to zoning first. So they got to planning and they didn't have to put their zoning hearing notice out. So neighbors didn't know about the planning commission meeting. They would have known about zoning, but they haven't known about that yet because they haven't gone to zoning and they haven't put the notice out 10 days before that. Rich held the subcommittee meeting and put notice out for, I didn't necessarily want him to have the meeting, but he did actually do notice for that. So last meeting, they came and spoke and it was either going to be this meeting or a subsequent meeting where they're going to come and speak and the neighbors are still not going to have any notice. So it's kind of a de facto preliminary sub-saldo meeting without neighbors being involved.
Well, Baron, you and I have already spoke about this tonight, so you know what I know.
Can you fill me in on, so I know what you and Baron know?
Well, the zoning hearing board still has this on their docket, so I was told, and Kevin, I guess, is gone, that George Brosman is going to pull the zoning hearing board application or amend it, but either way, they've got to go that route. Plus, they're looking at proposing some kind of a zoning petition in the WBOD, so.
But when Lisa said it was going to be on a future meeting and Bill was shaking his head, even if they're going to amend their zoning, that's still another Board of Commissioners meeting where they're going to present their case and try and, you know, change their request with still no neighbors being notified.
Well, they're still, they're still going to have to make a request to get on the agenda and it's going to have to be approved. I mean, I don't, you know, they've already pitched the board on not sending the solicitor to the zoning hearing board. The board has rejected that, so you know, they've got to either go to the zoning hearing board or they've got to pull it or delay it indefinitely if they're working through some kind of a zoning petition.
I understand, but the point being is that tonight, they could have come and pled their case here to say, please don't oppose us, the zoning hearing board, whether it was for the current application or the one they're going to modify. And residents in the neighborhood would have no idea that's meeting taking place unless they happen to check this agenda. Well, no, I mean, because this is, the whole reason they had to go to planning before zoning is because this is going to be a saldo application. So the neighbors, the only notice the neighbors have gotten so far is because Rich held the subcommittee meeting. So if the applicant is going to come before this board and talk about, try and persuade this board in terms of what they want to do with the development and how they're going to do the zoning, I think the public should be informed of that so that they're not getting it on the back end when the saldo notice has finally come out and much has already been decided about how the development is going to proceed.
John, you need.
They'll get notice of the zoning hearing board.
But this meeting was going to, is taking, the meeting tonight would have taken place before that. The zoning hearing board, they may not get notice for that for another month if the zoning hearing board is not.
I think that they tacitly approved that they were going to meet with the neighbors and the WBOD at least, if not the resident. You know, are they going to meet with the residents and not just the?
I don't, I have not had any communication with George Brosman. I don't know what that group is doing with with meeting with the neighbors or filing a zoning petition. There was discussion about modifying the WBOD. But they have an active zoning hearing board application and, you know, what kind of notice for things like that should the township be doing?
Well, as you said, if the township is going to, because to me, that's kind of like a preliminary saldo meeting, which they'd normally have to put notice out, which would go to planning.
It's not.
Well, because the board would be making, the board would be making decision to, for example, to reverse their opposition.
But it's not, it's not a saldo application yet.
But the whole reason they had to go through that process is because it is going to be a saldo application. Otherwise, they wouldn't have to go to planning. That's part of the requirement, so.
You knew this was on the agenda tonight.
Because I watched the agenda, but all the other neighbors who aren't getting notices don't know it.
So if they came back here, I mean, it was my recollection from the last meeting is that we asked them to go and engage with the neighbors and they were going to come back here and talk to us about that. And then, yes, they were going to try to, or whoever said it, I think, you know, persuade us to not send the solicitor, but they're obviously not here, so, I mean, they, I don't think they were coming for us to approve their plan. They.
No, but they were coming, but they were going to present aspects of the plan to get you to, again, not send solicitor Rice because of what they were working out with the parking or what they were working out with the use.
But they were supposed, I mean, they were supposed to engage with the neighbors. So if they came back here and said they didn't engage with the neighbors, then they didn't do what the board asked them to do, so.
But I would ask that engage with the neighbors is not just letting them cherry pick who they want. I think, you know, who knows what neighbors besides myself might have, want to have input. And right now, no neighbors have been notified except those within 500 feet. The saldo would be 1,000 feet. So if they're going to come back here, I think part of your requirement should be to have all neighbors notified that you're starting these meetings to help decide whether you're going to oppose.
As John said, they'll have to go to zoning and then, so that's.
But the neighbors will miss their opportunity. If you're having meetings here before zoning, zoning may not be till September.
Well, I don't know that we're having any meetings here. I mean, I thought they were just coming back.
Well, what I promise, what I promise is I will bring it before, so for Peggy and for Bill, I will, if they come back with a new proposal after talking with them, that I'll have another community development meeting and we'll send out notice again.
And if you would mind, wouldn't mind sending them out to the 1,000-foot radius, which is what they would have to do for saldo, so some neighbors aren't excluded early in the process.
I'll do my best.
Couldn't it just be the, couldn't it just be the responsibility of the commissioners? So we've got the sixth ward commissioner here. It's in sixth ward. We've got the third ward commissioner, who I know has engaged on this. I mean, the commissioners can certainly let their constituents know.
Not everybody gets the news. I mean, that's the whole reason why there's.
Well, then we would start notifying for, I don't want to argue with this.
That's because of the way they've decided to go about this. A lot of times, normally, they'll start, they'll start a saldo process so neighbors will get notified. And then they'll go to zoning, so the neighbors will already be aware of the process. They chose to do the zoning first, so if it wouldn't have been for the subcommittee meeting, the neighbors would have no notices whatsoever until 10 days before the zoning hearing board meeting. They missed their chance, they already missed their chance at planning.
But there was notice on that meeting and almost nobody showed up, so it's not, it's not for us to go knocking on doors and asking people to come. You come and we hear from you. We encourage, you know, people to come out and share what they think about it throughout the process, but if they're not showing, they're not showing.
Well, he's just making the point that substantively, if we, if they did show up tonight, we could have made that choice to withdraw our objection and there would have been no notice. And he's asking to have that, that we have the courtesy of not doing that. Only because in this case, it would have, it would have happened and some commissioners might not have notified the neighbors. So we'll do, we'll do, we'll do everything we can to get that notice, I promise.
This is at the intersection of three different wards also, in terms of that. But to the point, too, I mean, in the middle of the summer, I'm not necessarily expecting, I mean, that's part, matter of fact, in talking to a constituent in another ward, part of their issue was they didn't, they didn't even want Rich to hold his meeting because it was the middle of summer to address that, although it kind of had to happen if it was going to happen because of the timeframe they were on, so. I will say to some extent that the summer can have an effect upon.
Baron, there's always a million reasons why people can't come. Summer, that's why this is televised, it's put on YouTube. They can write to their commissioner. You know, we're here, we're active, staff is active.
I understand. They may, and they may have thought, oh, it's a subcommittee meeting, I don't care, they're not going to take any action, I'll wait till the board.
We hear your concerns and I think that, you know, everyone is actively involved and engaged and certainly everyone is paying attention to this, so. And again, you know, like I said, we've got the sixth ward commissioner here. Damien is the third ward commissioner and I know that he has heard from his residents on this. And we've all heard from you. You're doing a good job of keeping everyone informed as well.
Last meeting, they weren't on the agenda at all and they got to give their dog and pony show and trying to convince you and nobody got noticed for that.
Okay, well, we don't normally notice for every item on our agenda, so, but.
But again, this is going to, this is, this is a saldo. It's eventually going to be there. So to have these preliminary meetings that are pseudo-saldo without notice is kind of undermining some of the MPC requirements in the charter.
You're right, Baron. Good point.
Okay, all right, very good. Baron, thank you very much. Any other public comment this evening? All right, seeing now, may I entertain a motion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all, see you in September.